All right, I'd like to reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. And can I have a motion to certify closed session, please?
Yes, sir. I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the way entered James City County School Board, filing closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully attempted from open meeting requirements as stated in the James Law, and that only such public matters as been identified in the motion would be new, closed, meeting, well, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Ms. Hummel, and Ms. Soller.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye, thank you. And we'll go right into our public hearing on the proposed operating budget. Uh, Dr. Beers, would you mind reading those instructions before we hear our first speaker?
Let me get to that real quick. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meetings. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, citizens are asked not to engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and thirty seconds to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. I would also add that if you have brought written comments with you, um, that please hand those over to the clerk. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are concluded.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Do we have any speakers this evening for, um, for the public hearing?
Yep. Uh, first speaker is Alan Parham.
Good evening, Chairman Dowell, Dr. Heron, esteemed members of the Board. My name is Allyn Parm, President of the Williamsburg James City Education Association, also known as WJCEA. On behalf of WJCEA, we do support Dr. Heron's budget, including an increase in the salary of our staff in WJCC. However, due to the increase in inflation rates, increase in health insurance combined with the cost of living in WJCC, WJCEA asks our leadership, when discussing the budget to our founding partners, to keep in mind how all these factors will impact the income of our current staff and those looking to apply in WJCC as we continue to keep our thriving reputation of maintaining greatness and academic excellence with our amazing and highly qualified staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parm.
Uh, next speaker is Michael Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Michael Willen. I live at fifty fifteen Fenton Road in Williamsburg. I'm a retired educator, proud active-duty army spouse, and father of two sons with autism. I serve in the district and state-level special education advisory committees, and keep myself busy by staying involved with the PTA in all steps to the local school to the national level. I do my best to be an involved, dedicated parent. I'm here tonight to support the Williamsburg James City County School Board's proposed budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. Increasing staff salaries is critically important to our schools if we were to recruit and retain talented staff in order to keep our school division providing a superior, high-quality education for our children and to remain competitive with other divisions within the Commonwealth. Teaching can be a highly rewarding profession, and it takes dedicated staff to make our schools excel in academics, the arts, and athletics. Rewarding our teachers for choosing such an admirable profession should never be questioned, and the current budget proposal helps our teachers realize we now only value what they do but celebrate the successes they experience each day that they teach. Keeping our division staff to meet the needs of the children includes adding nine full-time elementary teachers, a full-time elementary school assistant principal, three full-time high school assistant principals, four full-time special education teachers, seven full-time special education teacher assistants, a full-time special education pre-scholar assistant, uh, four full-time school counselors, and two school psychologist interns, all of which are necessary to make sure our division continues to move forward and our children excel. Thank you all for what you do for our children each and every day.
Thank you, Mr. Willen.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, next speaker is Anne Marie Smith.
Are we in? Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, that was the last one. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Uh, with that, we'll close out the public hearing on the proposed operating budget.
Oh, I, my, my phone. I missed one.
We do still have one?
Sorry. Gail Baumgart.
Okay.
Baumgart? Your COVID money should be spent on direct services to students. The U.S. Education Secretary's January twenty-seventh speech called on all school districts to provide in-person tutoring thirty minutes, three times a week, to every student who has fallen behind. Please listen to Secretary Cardona's January twenty-seventh speech. It's on YouTube. York County has implemented an e-tutoring program and is developing an in-person, during-school-hours tutoring program that does not involve putting more strain on your teachers. To quote Secretary Cardona, "It's not enough to safely reopen schools. We must make up for lost time. The kids have suffered enough," long, end quote. The Board's choices the last two years have caused significant damage educationally and emotionally. Fairfax County is paying for students to go to outpatient therapy with providers in the community. That would be an excellent suicide prevention measure. We don't need more professional development or to burden the teachers any more than you already are. You can pay for students to go to private speech therapy in addition to what is provided during the school day to make up for lost time. You should use community resources and providers to help the school with this mission of remediating the mislearning and the mental health challenges. Of course, that would mean reducing some of your COVID mitigation strategies to allow non-employee professionals and volunteers into your buildings to help out the staff and the kids, which you have not been willing to do, and due to that, you have burdened the staff excessively and continue to fail the kids at this critical time. Secretary Cardona said that we must act with urgency. Please spend your money now on robust community partner direct services to children. Thank you.
Ms. Baumgart.
That, that concludes our public comment.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Move on to item four point zero one. If we could take the role of Ms. Soller.
Dr. Beers.
Here. Oh, hi. Sorry. I'm here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mrs. Hunley.
Here.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Mr. Dowell.
Here. If we can have an approval of the agenda for the evening?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion? Hearing, no? Ms. Soller?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Hi. Dr. Heron, Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the school board meeting two weeks ago, and throughout the month of February, we celebrated CTE Month. Our career and technical education program deserves continued celebration, and I'd like to focus on our partnership with Thomas Nelson Community College. The dual enrollment, enrollment program offers high school students the opportunity to concurrently earn high school and college credit. In five years, overall student participation in the dual enrollment program has grown by thirty-five percent to now more than two hundred and sixty students. Specific to CTE, dual enrollment in the healthcare program has nearly doubled from twenty-one students last year to forty students this year. In the words of James Town Senior Sophie Podlin, pictured at the right and quoted in a recent Gazette, Gazette article, "I was yearning for more hands-on stuff to do, and this class was really something that stood out to me. I could really take advantage of all the great opportunities that are here, and I can work with this EMT certification in college. So, starting off here, it's a great place to be." Sophie is enrolled in the EMT program and plans to pursue a degree in the medical field. Seventh-grade scientists at Lois Hornsby enjoyed a walk into Freedom's Park ecosystem while learning about populations. Their mission was to find and identify, identify biotic and abiotic factors. Students debated whether dead trees or fallen leaves are biotic or abiotic. After great discussion, Ms. Gaston finally settled the debate. These items are, in fact, biotic. Items such as pine cones that come from something living are considered biotic. An example of our learning. And finally, we are hosting a WJCC Schools Job Fair this Friday at Warhill High School from ten, ten a.m. to five to four thirty p.m., sorry. We have immediate openings, and we are accepting applications for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. WJCC Schools is seeking caring and collaborative colleagues with a passion for serving our students and our community. Those interested may apply in advance or on the spot. On-site interviews are available for all qualified applicants. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Any announcements from any board members, reports, committee reports? All right, biotic and abiotic. I, uh, sad to say, I probably need to go back to school. Science never was my strong suit. My daughter loves it, though. Um, item six point zero one, public comment. Dr. Beers.
Yes. And, once again, those students, those citizens desiring to speak, uh, this evening have submitted speaker cards to the clerk. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and, uh, direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It's the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, citizens are asked not to engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other demonstration during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and thirty seconds to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. If you have brought written comments with you, please submit those to the clerk when you are finished. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Ch, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, and my directions are concluded one more time.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Who do we have?
And, moving right along, the very first speaker is Anne Marie Smith.
Hi.
Sorry, Anne.
That's okay. Um, just good to see everybody without their masks. I almost don't recognize people. Um, anyway, my topic tonight is, uh, school board dedicated resource team member. Um, as part of the new budget, I'd like to suggest that the Board dedicate funds to hiring a full or part-time resource staff person, and you could call it whatever name you wanted to call it, um, that would report solely to the Board. Um, I see this position as alleviating the burden placed on the already taxed superintendent and her staff. The position should act as a nonpartisan resource for such things as, one, doing research on behalf of any board member regarding agenda items. So, for example, this could be assembling budgets of other school systems to allow the Board to compare them to ours. Another thing they could do is gather experts related to topics on the agenda. Um, for example, medical experts beyond those that were a part of the administrative team. Um, they could also help host and arrange constituent meetings between board members and the citizens that they serve. Um, lastly, they could also assemble documentation otherwise left, um, to the superintendent's staff to assemble. So, for example, COVID vaccination rate. So, it would, A, help the Board and B, alleviate some of the burden that's, um, placed on the staff. That's it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Um, and our next speaker is Toby Wiseman.
Good evening, School Board Superintendent. Curiously, there still seems to be a debate why CRT is considered divisive. An apt definition of this word is anything that divides, separates, and isolates. And this is happening in our local elementary schools, and I personally know a child who is experiencing this. When a white child is regularly asked to stand up to be the white male representative for history as the only one who could own land, who could vote or have any rights, is this dividing or is this unifying? And what do you think the black child is internalizing who hears this and sees this demonstration? That he is oppressed by his white friend? And yes, I say friend because many of these children are living together side by side just fine in a multicultural society in which we live today that is now being torn apart by an ideology that is separating based on skin color. This divisiveness is sowing the seeds of hate and victimology. How does this teach a child that they can be anything despite their skin color? How does this create unity? At other board meetings, I have stated that this wrongly and dangerously puts blame and shame on children who had nothing to do with this aspect of history. It needs to stop, and these teachers and principals need to be held accountable. Will you do that? Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Wiseman.
Uh, our next speaker is, I believe it's Mike Huzan.
Good evening. I would like to express my disappointment in, with some of the school board members and administration regarding your using our children as political pawns. I know that some of you have tried doing the right thing, but the majority of you need to start putting our children first and your political desires last. In nearly every instance that there is a message that needs to be put out after hours, parents receive an email, text, and a phone call informing us about those issues. Yet twice in the past month, you have tried to quietly inform parents of changes by only sending out an email with no fanfare. If schools are closed or something else is going on, it's plastered all over and multiple notifications go out. So, why is it when the school system changed their mask policy in schools, allowing children to attend mask-free, and later changed their mask policy on buses by allowing children to ride mask-free, is it quietly announced only via email with no notice? Why are you trying to keep parents and students in the dark? Is it because you're playing politics with our children in the hopes that most will still wear masks in school and on the bus? I can understand this happening once as an oversight, but twice? With two of your biggest decisions you've made this year, our children are not your political pawns, and they're not part of some game that you're playing that when you don't get you away, you pout, take your ball, and go home. I expected more from our elected officials and those who claim to care for our children. But after the past several months, I'm not surprised by your actions.
Thank you, sir.
I hope this was a strange coincidence in that from now on, you adequately notify parents and children of the changes in the future.
If you don't mind leaving your, the rest of your comments, and I'm not sure I had the name right. Can you state your name, sir?
Michael Hosang.
Hosang, thank you.
Uh, Gail Baumgart.
There are many restrictions at elementary schools in the name of COVID mitigation that are not practical and must be removed. I'm talking about no volunteers, parents not allowed in the building, no band concerts, there's no walk-in talk for the kids, and they have to eat lunch at their desks, no field trips, and no interaction with anyone outside of their class. My first grader is not allowed to sit on the floor for story time. Someone with a tape measure decided that if the kids sat in a circle on the floor, they couldn't all space three feet apart from each other, so circle time is banned in her class the entire school year. At lunchtime, my fifth grader in his classroom has to sit in his assigned seat and can't sit with his friend who is at another table across the room, so they literally yell across the room at each other during lunch with no masks because it's okay because they're eating. These are just a few of the impractical mitigations in place under the umbrella of social distancing in my elementary school. Distancing should not be used as a reason to cancel things. We have no in-person after-school activities. Still, my principal tells me that we may have a third drive-through-only fifth-grade graduation this year. It must be exhausting for your staff to have to constantly tell the kids that if they get too close to each other that they are not safe. Stop making the staff enforce these overly zealous distancing rules on our kids. Allow the parents and volunteers back in. Let's have field trips and in-person concerts again. No, COVID is not gone, but now is the time to roll back these impractical distancing rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baumgart.
And our final speaker is Huzan Lamont.
Huzan Lamont, City of Williamsburg. Uh, two Fridays ago, on February eighteenth, the newsroom section of the WJCC School Board webpage published a notice titled "Textbook Review and Input Request." The announcement stated that teams are evaluating textbook options to be adopted for use in elementary, middle, and, uh, high school science and social studies courses. We welcome your input. Deadline to provide feedback is Thursday, March the third. The announcement stated that teams are evaluating the textbook options. We don't know who's on those teams or how long they've been conducting their review, which leads me to this. The public notice was published on the Friday right before the President's Day weekend, which effectively only allows busy parents to conduct their reviews and provide their inputs in seven business days on twenty-four instructional items that are listed on that page. These instructional items include textbooks, both student and teacher editions, curriculum, teacher resources, interactive courseware, study materials, assessments and testing modules, tutorials, and student activities. Now, a quick review of these materials revealed a direct reference, and direct references to elements of the controversial social emotional learning concepts. We need more time to review these items. I strongly recommend that the Board extend the deadline for public review and feedback from the current date of this Thursday, March third, to a date that allows more time for us to provide our, uh, review and, uh, constructive and valued feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamont. Would you like to leave your comments or was that everything?
No, I'll send it to you in a letter.
Okay, thank you, sir.
They're all marked up on here, so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Beers. All right, uh, move on to proposed agenda items. Seven point zero one, review request for permanent easements at Warhill High School of real property to James City County. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to hand right over to Mr. Snipes this evening, who's going to present the information on this item.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. Tonight's proposed agenda item supports goal four of the strategic plan and is a request for permanent easements at Warhill High School of real property to James City County. The James City County Division of Stormwater and Resource Protection is requesting that WJCC Schools provide an easement in perpetuity. The request is to sup, to support the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance, uh, twenty-three of the James City County Code. In order to proceed with the project, the Williamsburg James City County School Board is being asked to grant this permanent easement that will impose restrictions on the use of nine point seven two three acres of the Warhill property. This request is at no cost to the school board. However, those restrictions are on construction of buildings, signs, billboards, outdoor advertisements, road or utility lines and easements without express written consent of the county watershed planner. The required easement, it is also required that the easement be kept free and clear of any junk, trash, rubbish, unsightly offensive material, and to limit the activities that remove or damage any vegetation or soil without the express written consent of that county watershed planner. Again, this is, this request is that no, no funding for the school board, no funding request from the school board to do so. And in accordance with the Virginia Code, you'll see that on the deed of easement, it requires that the county formally accept any deed of property interest, so they have asked the county administrator to sign on their behalf. The superintendent recommends that the school board review this request for a permanent easement of nine point seven two acres at Warhill High School, four to six fifteen Opportunity Way, and in recognition and foregoing in the consideration of the sum of ten dollars in other good and valuable consideration, and be prepared to vote at the March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two school board meeting. Any questions?
Oh, sorry, Ms. Hummel.
Um, so, I'm looking at the attach, I'm looking at the attachment.
Right.
And I'm seeing like two, three, four, five, six.
Yes.
It, and then the hash, hash lines, is that the easement?
Yes, um, on the deed of easement, you'll see there's also a Google Earth portrait that Google Earth coincides with the easement. So, where you see two, that is lying along Route one ninety-nine. That too represents the longitude and latitude of, there's another document with a, with a, um, table on it that represents the longitude and latitude of that part of number two. The same thing you will find for three, four, five, and six.
So, Warhill High School is on this property, and this is just an easement down right along one ninety-nine to avoid putting billboards and things along there. Um, but the, most of the property is taken up with, with Warhill High School already.
Warhill High School sits on fifty-four point five acres. You are, will be granting use of nine point seven acres that we really would not have any use for in the future. We can't, there's so tight, there's really nothing to build there.
Yeah, the only thing I'm looking at that looks like, because I'm like, maybe we would like, like around the track. There's that part right between the track and the parking lot. That seems like it's a bunch of trees. I'm just thinking, are we giving away land that we could potentially need for some use not known to us right now in the future? I'm not talking about the edge piece. I'm talking about the piece that's right next to the track, between the track and I'm not talking about the edge piece. I'm talking about the piece that's right next to the track, between the track and the, and the parking lot.
Number six is that?
Yeah, it's number si, it's like the area number six. It says natural, I think it says natural open space easement. Anyway, I just wanted your opinion about that.
Um, again, as you say, we can't tell what the future holds. Um, at the present time, we have enough parking for the capacity of the school. Um, that area, I would need to, again, we would need to measure to see how much part of the acreage that, that entails. Um, but it's your choice on whether or not you choose to provide them that natural open space, and we can always go back to them in, in the next, over the next two weeks and say, can you adjust this?
I, that's, that's just my, I, I'm curious to what you guys think. I, I totally understand the periphery. I totally understand that, but I just think like the internal s- space that wouldn't, wouldn't it be in our better interest to give our, ourself that ability to be able to deal with that land as we see fit? But once there's, we've given an easement, am I making myself?
I think where you're about to go is, do we have the opportunity to take it back if we give it up in the first place?
Right.
No, we don't, do we?
No, it's an easement in perpetuity.
But I, so, but do we have this opportunity now to say, hey, maybe that space in between the parking lot and the, and the track, maybe we want to retain that and not have that be part of the easement? Is that?
We can certainly go back and ask why they need that particular piece of land. We understand the, the, along one ninety-nine, but we can certainly ask, um, why that needs to be included and what the purpose is for the use of that land, uh, by the conservation folks.
I'm gonna, Ms. Ortega, and then Dr. Beers, and then come around if that's okay. Ms. Ortega.
Is, is the county not able to, to do what it wants to, uh, you know, can it, can the county not preserve it as open space and improve um, quality of stormwater runoff without owning it?
This gives them the right to go onto the property, to remove things from the property, and to prohibit anyone from building on the property. So stormwater runoff is also dealt with because you want, you don't want to put pervious pavement down in certain areas because it creates runoff to the stormwaters, how oil gets into the concrete. I'm going too far in. But the, it's, it's about protecting that runoff, whether you need vegetation to filter the water that is going into the stormwater system. Did I answer that for you?
Well, probably, but that doesn't mean. I'm just saying, can they not, can they, did you say they, they would need to put concrete down?
No, that, that, that will prevent us from doing certain things like putting a parking area there.
But in the meantime, since we're not building anything right now, can they not use it without owning it?
An easement is usually requested because they can't do, they can't prevent or prohibit anything on that property if they don't own it. So they are travel, they are, they are attempting to prohibit all of those things that I mentioned, billboards and outdoor advertisements on that. Because technically, if they don't own it, we could put a billboard there, and then they would be like, why you have a billboard up on, against one ninety-nine?
If I, if I may real quick add to Ms. Ortega's question, if we did retain that space in a particular area six and decided five years from now that we're gonna build something on it, maybe lengthen the parking area, for example, we would still need to get a, a, an assessment on the, uh, potential uh, route that water would travel.
Right.
Right, and it would be graded.
JC, yes, JCSA would have to come in and permit for anything that would be built on there, especially if we would expand our parking lot or something like that.
But with, but by giving an easement, we couldn't, we couldn't have the option even to do it.
That is correct.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, a couple of things, like, uh, I'm, I'm looking at the assessed value at forty-six million dollars. And we're gonna get ten bucks for that?
Forty-six million is probably for the fifty-four point one eight acres.
Yeah.
But we're only, we're, we are attributing, they want nine point seven of that. They want the periphery of the War Hill property.
All right, but it, and it is permanent.
Yes.
And it's not ours. It becomes their land.
That is correct.
And
It's not.
Later on, if rules change or regulations change, is it possible they could do something else with that land?
I would ask that question.
Right now, they're following.
Right now, they're following the county, the Virginia Code, county code.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I, I have some questions about the, the map, but let me kind of first talk about sort of the procedure that concerns me. Generally, um, I'm, I'm always interested in parity on who signs these things, so right now it's set up for, um, the school board to represent the school division and, uh, the administration to represent the county. And just, I'm always more comfortable when it's, there's parity there, so it should either be board to board or administrator to administr, administrator. So I'd much rather see Dr. Heron, if Mr. Stevens is signing this, I'd rather see Dr. Heron sign it. I just think that's procedurally a better way to go. So that's just my preference. Um, as far as, um, the easement itself, I agree with, um, Ms. Hummel, um, that we shouldn't, uh, give up anything in, kind of in the interior of the property, and I think that even conveys to the part of number five that kind of wraps around the track. Um, and so I would not be interested in giving anything away that's in the interior of the property. And also, I really lack context here. I mean, you've done a good job of providing the code and whatever, but why does James City County need this? Are they trying to get a certain number of acres preserved in the county, and they don't have, they don't own enough land of their own, so they need our land in order to achieve a certain goal? Uh, so, you know, I don't need an answer now, but contextually, it would be helpful to understand why. What, like, what's the big plan, and where do we fit inside that big plan?
I understand. I do not know what the big plan is. Um, as part of their deed, you can read there, the request is to, to support that Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance, and it, the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance protects tributaries from nine-point source pollution within the Chesapeake Bay drainage.
Right, so I mean, it would, like, it would be helpful to me to hear from someone from the county. Are this, are they doing this because they've just identified that this would be helpful? Do they have a target that they need our land to reach? Like, I, I, it would just be helpful to understand why they're asking for this, um, so that we can better understand, you know, why we're being asked to consider to doing this. Because at the end of the day, if we're not building on this anyway. Yeah, so it would just be helpful for me to understand procedurally why we're being asked to do this. Because to your point, we're not planning on building on it anyway, so. Currently, right, but even if we weren't ever, why do we need to offer this easement? So it would just be helpful for me to understand why they need that.
Ms. Young?
I'll ask that question.
Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, with my colleagues. I'm, I'm, first of all, I, I think we need context. I mean, looking at even, um, the number two section on there, that's, that's a very compared to what it looks like on the map and what it looks like on the, um, on the diagram. There's, to me, there's quite a bit of difference. We have no plans right now for major, uh, development or major expansion of War Hill High School. But I personally think, and I agree, that taking interior land, I'm not sure why they need that. I think they need, they have some explaining to do, I think, to our board. Um, because, I mean, I, I mean, I understand about the Chesapeake Bay, the runoff and all of that, but how does the interiors five and six help that? I mean, I look at the map, there's a runoff pond on the map. Um, I assume that's what that brown area is between, uh, between five and four. Is, isn't, isn't that what that is? Is a runoff pond?
I am pulling it up to look at that right now, ma'am.
I mean, it looks like dirty water and.
It's a, yes, that's a, that's a BMP.
BMP.
That's a BMP. It, it takes in water from the current pavement that is there.
Right.
Whenever you increase more pavement, you're gonna need a larger BMP or another BMP.
Right, I unders, okay. But I, I would like to have more information before I vote on anything, uh, for this.
Okay, well, I think that's really kind of the sentiment of the, the board as we look at this item, just to know more, and I appreciate you taking in our questions and getting us more information.
We'll ask the county attorney and get back with you before your next meeting.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Didn't want to cut anybody off. Were there any other questions from Mr. Snipes? Yeah.
I, I mean, first, thank, thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Yes.
Um, I, I mean, first of all, I'd like to know how this issue came to the forefront and, um, why was this the recommendation? Are they also, uh, targeting other, I don't, I shouldn't use the word targeting, but are there other properties that they're also making this request for an easement in the county?
This easement is part of our request for the War Hill Auxiliary Gym. And so as, as this came up with our War Hill Auxiliary Gym request, the code kicked in for this property, for the property.
So if we don't cede this property to the?
That's right. We cannot build a War Hill Auxiliary Gym if we do not succeed the majority of the property, and we will find out if all of the property needs to be given to them in order to continue with the gym. But it is a requirement to get the gym built that we get this deed done.
So there's the context.
That wasn't, that was not clear to me.
Yeah, I think that was the context we were looking for.
Okay.
That's the context right there.
Yeah.
I, I mean.
Yes, it was part, that's why it came up. We needed to get the easement done, so we can move forward with the, for the county to put the IFB out for construction.
Go ahead, Dr. Beers.
Yeah, what, um, is the, uh, is the easement area, um, at a, uh, lower level than the surrounding land?
I would not know that. I'd have to pull up.
One of the things that I, that I, I've seen it help happen, I've seen it, um, in other places as well, is it ultimately ends up becoming a collecting pond for, uh, runoff. Um, and so I'm, I'm just curious about, uh, um, that, you know, what, that maybe it's not, um, but, um, I know that with a lot of, with a lot of, uh, uh, construction, there.
I want to go back and clarify some context. Thank you. I want to go back and clarify some context. We don't know at the present time if they are willing or will be able to say, you can, the natural open space in this interior of War Hill, okay, we will not need that, and you can still build a gym, or are they requiring all six sections in order to build a gym? But it came up as part of the county code, so as we were going through permitting, JCSA says we need an easement for these things, and the, uh, our purchasing department, our, has said, until we get the deed of easement signed, we can't put an IFB out. So that's where we are. We need, they need everything tidied up because if, if the deed of easement isn't signed and we go for it with an IFB and it is awarded, if something happens, then the construction company can say, well, you didn't complete all the process before you awarded the contract. So that's why the deed of easement has to be signed.
Ms. Hummel.
I have just another question. So the assessed value of the fifty-four point eighteen acres is forty-six million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars, which comes out to like eight million dollars an acre, times nine equals, it's like, or whatever my math is, has seven million, seven hundred and eleven, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the nine acres of easement that we are, we would be giving them for ten dollars. I'm also confused about that.
We can, we can ask why it's only ten, well, we can ask why it's ten dollars. Um, I've, I've been involved in conversations in the past where we've given easements for one dollar to the county. And yeah, I think you maybe remember those as well.
Yeah, 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 and I'm not interested in charging the county for that, I mean, at all.
Oh, I, I guess I'm not either, but I just like, like, why the ten dollars? Like, why?
We can find out. It may be.
Comfortable with it.
Uh, I, I, yeah, it's a good question that we can ask you to find out for us. I think I saw Ms. Cook first and then Ms. Young.
I just was sa, I didn't, I just jumped in about the money.
Okay.
No, no, no charging.
Ms. Young.
I don't care about the money, but I do have a question. When I look on this map and I see the area that has been proposed for the auxiliary gym, compared to the amount of property they're asking for easement, it's non sequitur to me. It doesn't make any sense.
I saw the same thing.
I mean, they're already utilizing a lot of the area, uh, currently for sports. We need that gym, but I think they, I would like more information in why that large of a piece of property is required in order for them to grant us the right to build the auxiliary gym. We need the auxiliary gym, but I don't know why five and six has anything to do with anything.
That's, and that, and it may not be directly correlated to the gym. It may be directly correlated to this conservation effort thrown.
Conservation effort.
Right.
I mean, generally, when we do build a significant size of a project, there, there is a lot of stormwater retention and MVPs and things like that built around the property to, so that you don't end up with flooding in the property. But obviously, we need some clarity as to what exactly is involved with this one.
But there's a, there's a difference between having that and then deeding it over, like, just.
Did we have to do this for Lafayette's Auxiliary Gym? I'm trying to remember. I don't remember having to do this.
They did not ask for that because they weren't asking for conservation efforts for the gym. Again, Lafayette is landlocked. It wasn't part of, it's not on a main highway. It's not about billboards. It's more than just because we're building a gym. It's also part of the conservation efforts that they're trying for this, uh, stormwater resource protection.
Yeah, these co, these effort, this code may be new, newer than the Lafayette Gym, so that's another question we should know.
Mr. Snipes, it may be most appropriate to get someone from the county over to actually explain the process and why. That would be most helpful.
Absolutely, and also.
Ms. Young.
Uh, and then I'd like to know how many billboards are along one ninety-nine? On that, on, of all of one ninety-nine, I mean.
I will ask, or I'll go count them for you personally.
I can almost tell you, because I drive that frequently, I can almost tell you what it is. I mean, I don't recall, um, there's a, there used to be a vet sign on the corner on the turn-in to, um, Laurel Hills. I don't think there's any billboards along there. I would be interested if there is one, and I certainly know on the stretch of property between, uh, the entry, one ninety-nine past War Hill, there isn't zero, but if they.
And that may be because there's, of this, this, uh, preservation ordinance, that that, they may have gotten an easement for those areas as well.
Okay, well.
I will, I will ask.
More information, please.
All right, so this is tied in, could be, sounds like could be tied in with the, uh, War Hill Auxiliary Gym project. Is there a deadline on this decision?
It is tied in with the War Hill Auxiliary Gym.
Absolutely, okay.
Because if, until the deed is signed, purchasing will not allow the bid for the gym to go out. It may not be correlated directly as if the gym is causing the, the easement, because the easement may be just for the ordinance. But when we started to build the gym, the ordinance says that we have to provide, or we should be providing this for watershed, to the county watershed. So they may be mutually exclusive.
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
Okay. Okay, looking forward to more information. We'll move on to design progress on that auxiliary gym. Is there more information?
Mr. Snipes will introduce this, uh, item, and we'll introduce Mr. Ross in just a moment.
Yeah, hopefully, Mr. Ross is here. Um.
If I was to suggest this before we start, Mr. Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate, we would put it on for discussion and action at the next board meeting, so that if it does impact the IFB going out, we would have it all at the same meeting.
I'm fine with that.
Good, good evening, School Board Members again, and tonight's agenda item is for information and discussion, and is not intended to require a vote. The agenda item supports goal four of the strategic plan. If you recall, in May of twenty twenty-one, the board awarded the architectural design of War Hill High School Auxiliary Gym to HBA Architecture. And since that award date, um, Mr. Ross and representatives from HBA have provided you with updates at twenty, at thirty, sixty, and ninety percent. The last update was value engineering back in September. If you recall, he brought in all the things that we could change and what the cost would be. So, um, so as again, tonight, I want to introduce you again to Mr. Mike Ross from HBA Architecture. Mike?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, um, Board Members, and Dr. Heron. Pleasure to be here again this evening. So, um, as Marcel so eloquently stated, we are, um, near the end of our journey for the design phase of this project. Uh, we are completely finished with the, what we call the construction bidding documents, and they are ready to go out to bid. Um, I'm gonna point your attention to this schedule up here that we've presented to you several times. So where we are now is in March twenty-two, and presenting to you the final design, and the design has not changed since I met with you back in October and you approved the, uh, value engineering recommendations. So we expect the project to go out to bid in approximately two weeks, receive bids in four to five weeks, and, um, going through all the various processes, hope to have a contractor under contract. And um, going through all the various processes, hope to have a contractor under contract in May and construction starting on the site just as soon as school lets out in June. And then the overall goal is to have the auxiliary gym complete in August of twenty twenty-three, ready for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So just a, a little bit of a reminder, a recap, the gym, oxygen project is going into the space that was reserved and planned for it when the original War Hill High School was built. It's that red dash line in this diagram. It looks pretty much like I showed it to you back in, in October. Uh, there's a main gymnasium space with telescopic bleachers. There's a large multipurpose room that will serve for um, wrestling, ju- dance, gymnastics, and also um, additional shelter space. And then we have public restrooms, storage rooms, and then the associated mechanical, electrical spaces. Elevations, um, it's, it's being constructed of materials that um, are as close to, we can find as exact matches to the existing building, the same metal roof, the same brick veneer colors. So it's designed to match the architectural style of the existing building. It continues the corridor um, that's adjacent to the locker rooms and then that middle door that you see in that bottom elevation with the two windows in it, that's the extension of that corridor through which the students leaving the locker rooms will exit out to the um, to the playfields and the track area. This is a, a rendering of the addition, and you can see the um, existing school in the background, so the, the image in the foreground, the sloping roof is the multipurpose space. And then to the right, you've got your restrooms and uh, support spaces. And then behind that, the taller volume is the actual auxiliary gym space. So the only thing that's really changed in the last four or five months since I was here is what's happening in the construction market. And I think most of you are, you're reading the newspapers and listening to the news and you're, you're hearing what's happening with um, the cost of construction materials, shortages, um, shortages in the labor market. So where we, when we came to you five months ago, we were projecting a, a bid of an approximately three point one million dollars. We now think it's probably in the, in the order magnitude of three point four, three point five million dollars. We've adjusted our cost estimates to be increased by about fifteen percent, just trying to make our best guess as to what we think the construction market is gonna look like on bid day, but it, I can tell you, I've been doing this for thirty years and it's the most volatile construction bid market that I've seen in my career. So we're gonna all cross our fingers on bid day and, and hope for good results. We do have some bid alternates bid into the project so that we have a little bit of flexibility on bid day to, to award a viable project. And um, that's really all I have to update you on. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Mike, can you tell them what those bid alternates are?
The bid alternates.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, there's a um, wrestling mat hoist.
Have telescopic bleachers?
Yeah, the telescopic bleachers are a bid alternate.
By bid alternate, what, what are we actually saying?
It means that it's presented in the bid form so that you can opt to take it or not.
Gotcha.
And it's additive to the base bid price. And I honestly can't recall what the others are. They're fairly small numbers. There were things that we talked about during the value engineering process that could be bid as alternates.
A- and these aren't items that would necessarily change the footprint of the.
Would not change the space. They're, they're, they're related to accessories and fixtures and fittings.
Bring in later.
Within space that you could buy in later, yes.
Mike was correct, two out of three, telescoping bleachers, acoustic wall panels, and the wrestling mat hoist.
Ms. Young.
Yeah, my, my question about the telescopy, telescoping uh, bleachers, will they, when they're fully extended, will they be off of the basketball court?
When they're retracted, they'll be off the basketball court, and when they're extended, they will, they will stop, the leading edge will stop about seven feet from the edge of the court.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I had to ask.
That, that picture actually shows them in their extended position.
Okay, good.
Good question.
That's, is that the problem at Jamestown, right?
It's James Blair.
Blair.
James Blair.
Problem with James Blair.
Could you remind me how tall is the ceiling? I'm just asking on behalf of some volleyball players.
Height in the gym, I believe is approximately twenty-five and a half, twenty-six feet, about the same as Lafayette.
Okay.
So good height.
Thank you. I've got one of those.
Yeah, it's, it's important, important to get that right height in there.
Any other questions for Mr. Ross? All right, uh, so um, when we look at uh, cost of materials, are, are we surprised by this? I, and this is me asking to be caught up, understanding that I've been a part of this process. But did we um, prepare like any kind of incidental or contingency dollars within our budget for this?
That, and Ms. Ms. Ewing may be able to support this, but that three point five did intru- include contingency.
I'm sorry.
At three point five did include contingency.
It does.
Right.
Okay, okay. So we, we were originally hopeful for three point one.
We were originally, we were originally hopeful for three point one, yes.
Gotcha, okay, okay. All right, I don't see any other questions. So one other question that I have, and this is just me kinda wondering how this works once we get to construction, um, or is construction being done throughout the year? Is it interfering or working in alignment or in coordination with school, um, with students coming and going? When would it take place?
The construction will happen over the course of two summers and an intervening school year.
Okay.
We, we have requirements in the documents for contractors to maintain um, emergency exit requirements through those existing corridors at all times. Um, we're anticipating that most of the heavy construction, the noise generating type construction will happen over the first summer. And before the kids return in, in the fall.
Excellent, great. Thank you so much, Mr. Ross, I appreciate it. Really looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Hopefully we can keep costs down. All right, let's move on to um, eight point zero two, our fiscal year twenty-three operating budget discussion. Dr. Heron, do you have more for us?
We have no additional information this evening, Mr. Chair.
All right, let me uh, kick it over to my board colleagues. Are any comments or questions for staff, Dr. Heron?
Is this for the?
For our operating budget, yes ma'am.
Operating budget? I just had one question, it's been kind of, uh, I've been thinking about it and I was thinking about our seven percent. And my colleague, Ms. Mrs. Cook saying that we were gonna be bold with seven percent. And now I'm with our, with all of the things I'm hearing and with inflation and with the cost of insurance. I'm just wondering if we're not being bold enough. And I know it's, it's late in the game, but I'm just wondering if any other board members feel that we should be maybe looking at eight percent instead of seven percent. Just, just throwing that out there.
With that question, I'm curious, did the, do we have an update on the governor's budget? Do we, do we know more on the governor's budget as relates to pay requirements?
We know it's in the general assembly and the senate budget is different from the house budget in terms of the salary increase proposed. There, there are so many variables in each of the budgets, it's hard to know where it'll land right now. So, once we get final, the final budget, we get the calc tools, we're able to really assess how that impacts what we've got so far.
And every percent is a million dollars.
Approximately, yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yeah, um, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I have actually kind of several comments and questions, um, and I'm not, hadn't had a chance to organize my uh, thoughts to the extent that I like to, so I'm gonna apologize in advance for the rambling nature of. Um, but I, I agree uh, uh, with Ms. Hummel that seven percent's not enough, um, not bold enough. But um, I am not willing to ask for more and, and, and so part of it is because I'm looking at the increase that was proposed in the um, governor's budget. And I know, and then I know that the senate and the house budgets are different and the conferees are gonna have to work that out. And so we don't know how that's gonna shake up and what's gonna come out on the other end. Um, but um, based on what I've seen, the governor's budget is probably the best case scenario. Um, and so with that in mind, uh, um, that concerns me. Also, the increase from what was proposed in the governor's is, is budget plus the grant dollars. I, um, there's no incentive in Virginia for school boards to save money, right? Cause we can't keep any uh, fund balance at the end of the year. So that's a structural flaw in our system. Um, and, and I believe that this budget is a budget of need and I think it's real and I think it's justifiable, every penny of it. Um, so I wanna be clear about that, but I look at the increase this year that we're proposing and I'm concerned about year over year what that's gonna mean for our local government. So I'm reluctant to ask for more money because I think next year and the year after, particularly if the economy starts to falter again, we're gonna need to rely more heavily on our local uh, funders, um, just to maintain, right? And so, so I'm look, uh, so I'm thinking about year two, three, four, right now, when I look at this budget, when I look at this, um, pretty significant increase. So, so that's kinda why I'm not um, in, interested in that. Um, so I wanted to say that, and then also, Dr. Heron, if we could at some point, I've asked for this in the past and it's very helpful to me, particularly because we used to have a separate budget for special education. We still have a separate cost center, but those teachers used to be separate. Now they're embedded in the buildings and, and, and the cost center building. So I like to know what our per pupil spending is by school, uh, including bright beginnings. So if we could get that, it would just be helpful. Um, it doesn't impact my uh, support for this budget, which is, I do support this budget as it's presented. Um, but that's just helpful because bed is not equally distributed across our schools. Um, the other thing, um, let's see, that I wanted to um, ask about. Oh, um, just in general, I like the, the shift in the class sizes, uh, class size target based on free and reduced lunch numbers. But particularly at the middle and high school, I still don't think we differentiate enough. And I would like to see that change over, over time. Um, I, I think there's too much similarity. Um, doesn't really matter, matter right now at the middle schools because we've redistricted recently enough where the, that level is relatively the same across the middle schools. But as we know, there's huge disparities at the elementary and high school uh, levels. And I, I, I'd like to see more differentiation at the high school level, um, to allow more support uh, for students in high schools with higher and free and reduced lunch numbers. Um, I also wanted to speak a little bit about our um, commitment to focusing on salaries and shifting a little bit on, on the benefits. I know that's really hard on some employees, particularly our lower paid employees. But um, I, I think once we get to a place that's a little bit more consistent with our neighbors, we can then uh, balance that out. But I really like that this board has decided to do that and focus more on money in people's pocket and giving them the choice on which level of benefit they want to support. Um, but back to the um, my earlier comment about um, the difference between the governor's budget and the senate and, and house budgets. I, I know that you don't have a calculation tool yet and we're not gonna really have one, um, uh, until that process is over. But um, I, I feel like as a board, we need to have a discussion right now. We know how much we're gonna be asking um, the local governments for money, for more money, but at that, that's probably gonna be more, right? Than what's in this budget, and I think we need to talk about that because if we get into a position where the final budget that gets um, passed by the general assembly and then hopefully gets signed by the governor causes us to ask for significantly more money at the local governments, I think we need to decide that we're either in support of that or that we need to walk back something. And um, and so I, I am in support of asking for, for more money. Uh, this, this budget right now is below what our average ask is, um, so I think there's some play in there. Um, but I, I just want us to have that conversation, so I support this. I wanna stick with the seven percent. That means we have to ask for more money than what's written here in black and white, um, of James City County and of the um, city of Williamsburg. I'm okay with that, but I just think we need to have that discussion, Mr. Chair, so.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Other thoughts, comments, questions?
Do we know what any of our neighboring counties are doing yet? Have we heard anything? I think some um, divisions have put out what they're doing, a lot are still in process. Um, I've heard five percent. I've heard above that and some, I've heard bonuses this year, bonuses next year, probably using one-time money such as ARP funds for that. Um, we've put our, you know, we really want to put it into salary so that it becomes permanent and impacts VRS. Um, Ms. Cook, I mentioned the difference, at, at the moment, it's five percent in the senate budget and at the moment, it's four percent salary plus a, a one percent bonus in the house. But you know, another factor in the overall picture is the senate, if, if, if that goes through, they've also uh, put in a significant amount of money to fund support positions and we may gain some funding from that. So really, it, it's, it's an unknown piece right now as to where it will actually land overall.
Dr. Beers.
Yeah, I'm, um, Karen, I think back to the, one thing you said, cause I'm, I wanna make sure I understood what you, uh, what you meant when you said that, that, that there's, there's a structural flaw with the grant section of the, of the budget. I don't, I'm not understanding what you meant by that.
Oh, I was saying there was a structural flaw in the way that schools are funded in Virginia because there's no incentive to um, save money because all the money at the end of the year has to revert back to the local governments. So, so it makes it, um,
Why is it a structural flaw? Because we've always had grants in the budget.
Ms. Dr. Beers, my comment had nothing to do with grants.
I'm sorry?
My comment had nothing to do with grants.
Uh, okay, so you didn't say grants i- is a structural flaw?
No, I did not say that. I re- referenced the increase in the amount of money that are coming from grants. No, I did not say that. No, I, I work for an agency that actually gives that uh, school division a grant, so I'm all in favor of grants, yeah.
Yeah, and we have people that are, that are constantly, well, we get grants on a regular basis.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
I was curious about that, okay.
Uh, Ms. uh, Ms. Lordo, did you have a, I wasn't sure if I saw your hand or not, I apologize. No, okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could clarify, you know, the structural piece, uh, as Ms. Cook has referenced, is the fact that we're fiscally dependent. And we don't go out on our own taxing authority and therefore, at the end of the year, by law, we give any leftover funds back to the city and county. And so I think that's what Ms. Cook was potentially referencing.
It prevents us from thinking in a multi-year way.
Correct.
So I, I, I do think it's appropriate that we, as a board, discuss uh, what we are willing to ask of our funding partners based on what we, what may or may not have from the state. Uh, may not happen from the state. Um, I, I'm shuffling through a hundred and sixty-two pages, I'm not gonna get there in time. But um, I always kinda point out, for me, it helps me understand historically um, where our final proposed budget lands in relation to previous years. And I think that we are just under the average two point three percent increase that we see year year. I think we're just under that. Um, and I agree with Ms. Cook, uh, I would, I also agree with Ms. Hummel. I would love to see us pay our faculty and staff much more and really be incredibly competitive. Uh, not only in our region, but in the state as we're going out all across the state to attract um, meaningful teachers and faculty, but uh, staff members. Um, but if we look at what may happen at the general assembly in relation to the governor's budget, um, we're gonna be having some real conversations with our funding partners about the, uh, the need that we do have now, um, the budget need that we're presenting, why this is appropriate, why we, we don't wanna have to scale it back in order to make next year. We don't wanna have to scale it back in order to make next year a success, um based on the budget that we're presenting. For me, I like seven percent. I was a uh I was a fan of that that seven percent option. Um I think it makes sense to hold with where we're looking at the moment. Ms. Young, would you care to weigh in on that?
Did you forget my name?
No, I did not, of course not. Did I say the wrong name?
No.
Okay.
Trying to confuse you, obviously. Um no, I I support the seven percent. Um I I think all of us on the board would like to see um more. But I I do understand that it without, we we have a lot of unknown. Things that are going on right now in the legislature and uh I'd like to just hold firm with what we've. What the superintendent has proposed and um. And then play a waiting game to see what else comes down, cause I really do not wanna go below the seven percent. And I would be happy if our board would then, uh as as Ms. Cook mentioned, it is a uh budget of need. But I think we have a stronger position if we um can. Point out to the fact that we are below the two-point-three percent that we usually request. So that's where I stand.
Sorta go.
Where do we stand in relation to that if if the um? The General Assembly ends up going with four percent and we've gone with seven, so that puts us at a at a. Three percent increase, so where do we stand in relation to that two-point-three that we like to? We wanna be at with the county automatically?
And I guess that's what I was suggesting uh from my part, that. If the General Assembly and the governor, they settle on four percent, are we maintaining, are we holding firm with seven percent despite that? Or?
And and then what is the, where does that put us automatically?
Ms. Nguyen may be able to provide, sorry, Ms. Cook. So Ms. Nguyen maybe will provide some response to that, it does add one million dollars to the budget. Um I I believe we're still within our average increase.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to say until we get the final information from the state as to how much money we'd get under the House version versus the Senate version. And so how that would impact our revenue and therefore how much we'd have to ask for in addition to the current request from the localities. So right now, the budget is a one-point-seven percent increase to the localities, which is. And on average, it's been about two-point-three to two-point-five percent over the past several years.
That's significantly under right now.
We'd still be in good shape.
But if if we still stick with the seven percent, I just wanna, it's still an ask. So 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 then it we could be set told no. And then we would have to come back and figure out what that adjustment would be and what what priorities. Um we'd have to to um amend, so um so I, so that's why I brought up the question, like. If we still stick with seven, doesn't mean we're getting it, but do we still wanna ask it even if it means we're told no? And I say yes because that, because that's what I think we should do. Um but if it puts it at at us at, you know, the three percent increase um. Over on our average, then I I would still. Support asking, recognizing that, cause I've always supported asking and being gracious when told no. Cause I just think that's the dynamic in Virginia.
Ms. Ortega and then Ms. Hummel, I think, sorry.
This might be a newcomer question, so is there a reason why we are making these decisions? Weeks before the General Assembly makes their decision? Why are we going through this process?
There there is a timeline for us to present our budget and for the the county and city to approve our budget and then Ms. Nguyen probably has those dates.
Yeah, so we have to um submit our budget to the localities by April first. So it's it's possible within two weeks, we'll have the information to know, well, if it ends up being the House version, this is how much money. We'll get and then the Senate version, so it's possible on March fifteenth. That I'll have that information to share with you before you vote, or we do have a tentative date on our budget calendar to push that vote off another week.
But the General Assembly has gotten progressively later.
Yeah.
And then and um and then also like the conferees, you never know what they're gonna spit out. I mean, just but you have the House budget and the Senate budget and then they get in a room and. You know, it's not necessarily aligned with either one. I mean, we've seen, yeah, we've seen two plus two equals seven, be proud of that conferee.
Well, if it equals our seven, that would be good.
Ms. Hummel?
And just a reminder, what did we give back last year? How many millions did we give back last year?
It was.
Five?
Eight.
I just want everyone to.
Yeah.
We gave back almost eight million dollars last year. Julie's gonna rest on that.
What I'm gonna say is not really popular nor realistic, I don't think, but I always feel like we have not, cause we ask not. And of course, to me, ten percent is bold and if we land at nine, eight or seven, then. That's great, but I know that's not.
Yeah.
But ten is what I heard. Um and if we get seven, that's awesome, but I just always feel like ask and if they say no.
I I I agree, like like ask for more than the seven and be gracious if we say, whatever, I don't know, I just. Uh this has been a a tough year with inflation, it's been a tough year, it's gonna be a hard year to replace. The teachers that we're losing, it's just, I don't know, so that's.
I just feel ask.
You know. Yeah, I know, I I I I agree, I I I think ten percent is is. The right thing to do, but this and in all of the years I've been on the board and in the twenty years I've read this. Book for reasons I can't even explain why I've read this for twenty years. Um uh thi- this is, this is the first time looking forward, I'm nervous about. The year, the next year and the next year and, you know, without, I mean, before we didn't have the foresight of a recession or, you know, or a pandemic. Um but I'm looking at the amount of money that we're gonna need to just hold level. And the increase coming from the state and then these grant funds that have been uh awarded to us through uh the federal government. And I, so I wor- I'm worrying about long-term sustainability, so I've I I am concerned that if we. Jump too much without the ability to squirrel away money and save it and hold on to it to to buoy our finances into the future. I'm I'm worried if we ask for too much now, we're gonna have to cut in the in in the next year or the year after, so that. That's what I'm looking at and I I maybe, staff, please, you know, educate me to. And convince me otherwise, I I'm I'm open, but that, when I read this budget and look at that, that's what I'm seeing and and so. Um I want to avoid those kind of um ups and downs. I want I want to be able to try to figure out how to smooth, so that's why I'm advocating for what I believe to be. Conservative ask.
And I unders- and I I do understand that, but also I think of what. What are we dealing with now? I know we have no control over what's gonna happen in the future, that's the way the way I look at it. Let's fix now or help fix now.
Dr. Beers, we'll go to you and then Ms. Ortega.
Yeah, um I um I support that ten percent in- increase. Uh part of what I um I remember is um. Uh we had budgets slashed uh a number of times and and I. And if it looks like there's a huge jump, I think part of that also, we're still in the process of trying to catch up. So and 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 if people don't recognize that, then. They uh aren't very good at history because we really, we are. Um uh we're not just trying to maintain, we're still trying to uh um I I think catch up. Um and I don't think um uh I I don't think we have enough information. To start talking or thinking about, well. If we wanna maintain this, what do we have to take away? What, you know, what should we be thinking about? I don't wanna do that, I I I wanna wait, I wanna wait to see how much money actually comes to the county. Um and um and how much money comes to uh uh you know, to the school division. And then see where we go from there, I I think, I I always feel if you start off. By talking about what we're gonna cut. Then that can become a self-fulfilling prophecy and and I. Um and I don't know, uh I I don't have enough information. Uh that's why I don't even wanna, I wanna think about it, but I do, I do think. Part of that ten percent is also um part of getting back. Uh quite a bit of uh funding that we lost uh not that many years back. And 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 I know it's tight, I you know, I um but I I really uh. I think that's really important.
Ms. Young?
Are you finished? Okay, uh one one of the things that came out earlier this year is. How many of the positions that had been hired in this budget, they became permanent and they could have been funded, they were being funded. I mean, those positions became, what am I trying to say? Those positions are going to be funded regardless, right? But my question is, how many positions uh that are current, in this current budget are being paid for by. Uh the ESSR funds or the funds from the government, the grant funds?
Um we've brought a a number of positions into the operating budget this year, there are eight or nine teachers, four counselors.
Twenty-one total.
It's twenty-one total that we're planning for next year to come from ESSR funds into the operating budget.
So we're moving some across and and then in the ESSR funds, as you'll learn later tonight, that there are other resources, including positions still in. ESSR funds for us to consider bringing in next year. So when we got that amount of money, we had this step process where we would have positions and then bring them into operating each year. So that we wouldn't be left when the grant funds run out with having to get rid of a lot of positions, so there's a. There's a planning piece there to take us slowly off the grant funds.
Right, yeah, and I think that's where I hear um Ms. Cook talking about is we wanna make sure that that we can. Take those people that are, that we're putting in positions that we can go through that step process where they become permanent. Permanent part of the uh the staff and faculty of our school division. And not having to go back in a year and a half or two years saying, ah, sorry, uh we don't have the funds for your job anymore, so I. Prefer to stay with the seven percent and make sure that we can guarantee the continuation of those positions in the future. So that's where I'm at, I and and personally, I'd like to offer a lot more than ten percent. But in reality, I want to make sure that everybody has a job that we're hiring. So.
Thank you, Ms. Young? Am I missing anyone?
Can you underst- explain the bonuses, cause when I hear like some school divisions give. A raise in a bonus, where does that bonus money come from? Like, cause I've heard like, oh, certain teachers got. X amount extra, where did it come from then?
I don't know where the division, other divisions get it from, but we um generally, some of the ARP funds, the federal funding. Can be used for bonuses, it's one-time funding. So if it's a bonus, we don't have to find it again next year, you get it that once and it's gone. Um by putting seven percent rather than five percent, you know, this board and and administration wants to put it in on a permanent basis. So that it actually becomes part of VRS. So a bonus is great, but once you have it, it doesn't ever have to be repeated again.
Ms. Young?
Right, I'm I'm and I guess I'll just state my position again about bonuses, I'm totally against it because. One of the things that happens as as was mentioned, it's gone and it does not apply to VRS. And so as teachers age out and go into retirement, any of those bonuses do not become part of that formula. In figuring out their retirement and that's why I oppose that, so.
Ms. Ortega?
So currently, we have, in the in the current operating fund, we have. Twenty-one new full-time positions that we. We can fund if we, we can fund in perpetuity if we get a seven percent increase, but we can't if we.
It it if I could, um so when we say, can we use the fiscal year when we're talking about budgets, cause when we say this year or next year? Um um just um so I don't get confused. No, I I mean, I'm not stating this, are you asking me that question?
I'm asking every, anyone who wants to answer.
I mean, I mean, I I just, um I'm worried about sustainability, that's that's why I brought up that.
Cause of those additions.
And the ones that are yet to be absorbed.
So so when we look at um the increase from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three, which looks like it's the most. The most staff in five years, is that, is that what you're talking about?
Um no, I'm not worried about uh FY twenty-three, cause that's what's in front of us right now. I'm worried about FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five, FY twenty-six as federal funds decree, those grant dollars go away. As those positions that they're currently funding have to be absorbed by the division as um. Uh our enrollment numbers are um TBD, you know, to be determined and what dollars come in as a result of that. Because tha- those numbers are are buoyed right now, right? And so I'm just thinking, I I'm just seeing all that and concerned about going too far out on a limb. Recognizing, I mean, I wish we could save money and then smooth ourselves, but we can't. And so if we go too far out, then we're gonna have to potentially rely more heavily on our local funders. They may or may not be in a position to accommodate our needs and then we may have to cut. So I would rather not have to cut two, three, four years from now. I hope I'm wrong, I hope we're able to give another seven percent raise and another seven percent raise and another seven percent raise.
But it's and it's not an option to take fewer. FTEs on, that's not.
What was the question, I'm sorry? I.
If we, I'm just curious if if we could take fewer full-time positions on in order to. But those. Heavily fund the ones that we have.
So an FTE at a hundred thousand is, you're you're talking of having to get to ten FTEs. To to even count for a percent of a raise, so it's kind of a different balance?
And I think also, Dr. Beers alluded to it is that. There was a period of time where a lot of things remained kind of static. And and I think because we went through a recession and we're still, we're still dealing with the results of that. Recession and so as we're adding staff now, we're trying to address the needs of our current student population. Which we have not always been able to do because of the recession and it takes a long time to get back to. A position, I don't know that we ever will after the pandemic, to be quite honest, so.
If I could add to that as well, the staff that we're bringing from the grant into the operating budget. It impacts class size for teachers. Um it impacts the counseling res- ratio to student, which is a support system for teachers. So salary is one thing, but the quality of teaching and learning in the building and the climate of the building, which all of these staff contribute to. Become part of the puzzle as well. And so if we end up with twenty-eight in the classroom rather than twenty-five, we won't keep teachers either. So we've got to balance the number of staff we're bringing in as well as the the percentage raise that's competitive.
Okay. Um I'm not sure if I've really got a good sense about me on. Individual board members and what we would like to see as far as um a salary. Um a pro- proposed salary adjustment um or or pay increase adjustment. Pay increase adjustment um from eight to eight from seven. Eh am I, maybe I'm clear that a majority of the board would like to stick with seven. Despite what, should we just go around the horn and ask? Dr. Beers, what's your inclination? Stay with seven or adjust to eight?
Um I think the time is now and and I fully support that.
Support what?
Seven percent.
Seven, thank you. Uh Ms. Hunley, I think I heard you say ten?
Ten, shoot for ten, land at seven.
Okay, sorta go, I just wasn't clear, I'm sorry.
Yeah, seven.
Seven, okay.
Seven.
Ms. Young said seven, Ms. Cook was seven.
Yeah.
And Ms. Hummel, eight? I do, I get it and I would love to say eight. Um I I I really would, I I would love to say ten, to be honest and um. I I really would, but I know that doesn't mean a whole lot when we don't say ten. It, it's, it's something that we can work towards. And on a side note, I think, I wonder as we look at a twenty twenty three, twenty four budget cycle, I, I'm really gonna be interested to talk about the healthcare piece as relates to take home pay, V R S and not everything in between. I, I've been on the board for a little while now and it seems like where we continue to lay on our backman staff, the burden of healthcare and it affects, you know, take home and so really interested to see, you know, as we began that process, you know, can we project a, a point where we get to level? I, I don't know if, if that's something we can begin to look at for next year as far as the conversation, but going back to the seven percent and, and I agree with Ms. Cook. I think what she was conveying, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but this board needs to be perpetually looking in the future and what, and, and the success of the future and not be beholden to dollars that really aren't ours. We hope that, you know, our, and this is me speaking and not Ms. Cook, but we hope that our, um, our economy will improve. We hope that what we're seeing with COVID and the decline of COVID is, is going to hold and we're not gonna see some other variant that cripples communities or, I'll leave that alone. And so with that, we become less reliant on dollars that really aren't ours to begin with or could go to other more reasonable uses. So preparing for the future in that way. Ms. Ortega.
Is there a way to, to know or, or to, just so we can internalize what, when we say seven percent increase with the additional healthcare costs, what is, what is the percent come out to for staff? What are we actually, what is the actual raise that we're giving people?
I think Mr. Baker gave us a couple of examples. You can take just, we took a, an average, cause still doing an average teacher pay and he tried to provide that information to the board in terms of the actual dollars you would get for a pay increase and the actual dollars you would pay for this amount of a health insurance increase.
I actually, I've got, I actually have those numbers in front of me.
Right, but that, that's just, that's an average of all the, the spectrum of, of employees. And so it's going, it, it definitely does come down on different people in different ways.
Absolutely.
So. I just think it's important to, I think it feels, it's just important to have a sense of what those numbers actually come out to at different, at different levels of, of experience because it feels good to say seven percent and for some people it's not gonna be seven percent. So that's, that's all.
Uh, Ms. Hunley and Ms. Cook.
And I just wanted to be clear, I wasn't, I was just asking a question about bonuses. I'm not, I wasn't saying if I was in favor or not, but I do know that when that type of thing gets out in the public or in the newspaper and school divisions do give a certain percentage rate higher than us or even the same as us and then offer bonuses, it does send a message, whether it's true or not, that we don't appreciate our teachers because we didn't do what some of the others. So I wasn't saying, and I do think, I'm glad you clarified about, you know, the part about V R S R S and I think that's important, but I was just wanting to be clear that I wasn't supporting, I was just asking the question about bonuses and just, that's what does seem that when that happens, it sends a message that we don't appreciate our people as others do.
Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to thank Ms. Holler for reminding me, I neglected to read my disclosure statement and.
Oh, I did too.
And so, um, it's been, yeah, a real issue for me this year, so I apologize if you don't mind, I'd like to do that. Thank you. So, um, Ms. Holler, if you could put that at the beginning of this discussion, that would be awesome. So as a member of the School Board of Williamsburg, James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in that fiscal year twenty three school budget because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation, which I could actually have discussed earlier today. However, I believe that I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public's interest.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Same with myself, as a member of the School Board of Williamsburg, James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest in the fiscal year twenty three school budget because my husband is an employee of the W J C C schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of the vote on a budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you to you both, and I appreciate the, the, um, robust discussion. I think Dr. Heron, that the desire of the board is to see us hold at seven percent in your proposed budget and I think you've got the support of your board on that, on the, on the proposed budget in its entirety. All right, okay. Let's move on to item eight point zero three, overview of pandemic related grant funds. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Ms. Ewing is going to give us a very high level overview of, of the use of federal grant funds so far. So if you're aware of all of the grants that have been and gone and those that we still have yet to, to spend and some of the parameters surrounding that. Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This evening, we'll be providing an update on the pandemic related federal grant funds that the division has received since the start of COVID nineteen. Here you will see a listing of funding that we've received that was either fully expended in fiscal year twenty one or that we plan on fully expending by June thirtieth of this year. In total, it is approximately ten point three million dollars. Included in this funding are the coronavirus relief funds provided to us by the city of Williamsburg and James City County in fiscal year twenty one, coronavirus relief funds awarded directly to us, our original CARES grant, the CARES set aside grants and gear funding that we applied for and S R two funding. We have previously provided a report on the spending of the funds spent in fiscal year twenty one, so we will not be reviewing that information again this evening. Here you will see a listing of funding that we have received in the current fiscal year and the projected amount that we anticipate carrying forward into fiscal year twenty three at this time. We will go into further detail on the fiscal year twenty two spending for these funds as well as S R two and review the estimated budget for S R three for next year, as well as some of the smaller grants that we've recently been awarded. In total, W J C C has received approximately twenty two point two million dollars in pandemic related grant funds. Our award under the coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations act, also known as S R two, was four point nine million. We expect to fully spend out this grant by the end of the current fiscal year. These funds are being used to support several positions this school year, including four school counselors, which enabled us to meet a two hundred fifty to one staffing ratio, eight elementary teachers to support our adopted class size ratios, two special education teachers, as well as seven special education aides and site based subs at each school. Purchased services expenses consist of one time costs associated with freight, site work and installation for nine trailers at seven elementary schools, the band room expansion at Lafayette to assist with social distancing, professional learning focused on learning loss, communication and engagement resources, contracted transportation services for students within our division as a result of driver vacancies, virtual Virginia fees, tent rental to assist with social distancing and contracted instructional resources. Lease and rental expenses consist of the fiscal year twenty two lease expense for the nine trailers, Verizon wireless MiFi service that has been utilized during virtual learning and the storage rental facility where we are temporarily storing furniture and equipment in order to create spaces where social distancing is possible. Material and supply expenses consist of furniture and equipment to assist with social distancing, laptops for teacher assistance, additional owls to assist with virtual learning, air purifiers, sanitation supplies and instructional resources. Again, in total, this grant award was four point nine million dollars and we expect to fully spend this out by the end of the current fiscal year. In general, the American Rescue Plan or S R three funds have the same permissible uses as other federal programs, but all expenditures under S R three must address the effects of COVID nineteen on school operations. Our award amount under S R three is approximately eleven point one million. We expect to spend approximately eight hundred thousand by the end of this fiscal year and will carry forward the remaining funds into next year's budget. These funds are available for use until September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Some examples of allowable uses of the funding include instructional resources and materials, supporting virtual instruction and staff to provide academic and mental health supports to students. These funds also have a requirement to spend twenty percent on learning loss. This amounts to approximately two point two million dollars. This year, these funds were used to support summer school, one site based sub at each school, virtual academy teachers, including two special education teachers, contact tracers and an L P N. Looking ahead to next fiscal year, planned expenditures include continued funding for nine virtual academy staff, two site based subs at each school, as well as one for Bright Beginnings, elementary math support teachers, funding for summer school and tutoring services. Anticipated purchase services expenses consist of virtual Virginia fees, digital curriculum resources, a redesign of the Jamestown weight room and tent rental to assist with social distancing for the Jamestown cafeteria, the development of an academic focused volunteer program, mental health resources and professional learning focused on learning loss. Lease and rental expenses consist of the fiscal year twenty three and twenty four lease expenses for the nine trailers and Verizon wireless MiFi service for the additional MiFi's we've acquired since the start of COVID. Material and supply expenses consist of air filtration and sanitation supplies, instructional resources such as decodable elementary books, reading and math remediation materials, furniture and equipment for outdoor classrooms, calming and sensory rooms and convertible learning spaces. Funds will also be used to create outdoor learning spaces at several schools. The American Rescue Plan Title six B and six nineteen flow through funds will be used to purchase instructional resources to meet the needs of students in a variety of instructional settings, including sensory items, resources to enhance the teaching of functional skills and instructional materials. Bright Beginnings will utilize their funds to purchase revised editions of their standardized developmental evaluations as well as a social emotional learning program to enhance their curriculum. The S R two social emotional learning grant funds will be used in support of the creation and implementation of professional learning opportunities for school counselors, M T S S teams and teachers to enhance tier one practices, strengthening academic instruction, school culture and student connectedness and success. While the majority of these funds will go towards professional growth and learning for W J C C staff provided within the division, the remaining funds will provide opportunities for participation in conferences such as the annual Virginia School Counselor Association Conference and materials for school counseling programs and M T S S initiatives in each building. The American Rescue Plan homeless children and youth grant funds will be used for a back to school kickoff event designated or designed to prepare McKinney Vento families and students for a successful start to the school year. Division staff will be available to assist families with registration and transportation information. There will also be barbers and stylists at the event to provide haircuts and medical staff will be available to schedule appointments for physicals and immunizations for those who may need them. All students will receive a backpack with school supplies at the event as well. That concludes our overview of the pandemic related grant funds. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, all right, any questions from the board?
I must say, it never ceases to amaze me how well you organize all those grant, that grant money and, and, and really identify the key areas. It just comes through when you, you know, when you put it up there and you see it and it's here, it's remarkable, right, really. I think it's money well spent and we're spending it well and carefully.
Young.
I, I had, I, I have several questions, but the first one I have is what are calming and sensory, sensory rooms? Is that for, I would like a, is, is, is that just for students with autism?
Yeah, I believe Ms. Bourgeois could speak to that one.
Good evening. Calming and sensory rooms meet the needs of a variety of students that may need those types of tasks. It can have like sensory toys, it can have calming corners. A lot of our elementary schools have calming corners, which are, it's really about teaching students how to, to be able to handle their emotions and have time to, you know, as adults, we, we know to step away and, and gather ourselves. So it's, it's, it's a space for them to be able to do that. It has different resources available for the students to choose. But it's, it's typically a corner in the classroom. Sensory rooms can be a separate room and it could have a variety of resources to meet individual student needs. A lot of those students are students with disabilities, but it's available to other students too.
Okay, I'm processing this. Okay, and these calming and sensory rooms are grades K through twelve, I assume?
The calming corners are typically more often in elementary schools, but sensory rooms are available K twelve.
Okay.
Any other, any questions, board members? Oh, I didn't mean to cut you off, I thought you were, go ahead, Ms. Young.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still processing the calming and sensory rooms, you'll have to give me a second, but, but I guess one of my questions, I mean, whenever federal grants or monies are given to us from the federal government, they usually come with very specific parameters of how they can be spent, is that or is that not true? I think that's true.
Yes, I believe there are certain parameters that you've got to stay within, but those are fairly broad. What are to address, you know, learning loss obviously is one and the, um, social emotional well being of students, mental health of students returning after the pandemic.
Right, and because one of the things that we know is on the docket at the, that we have asked for is funding for the Bright Beginnings different facilities for our, for our younger students. Is there any possibility that any of these funds can be used to help build those buildings?
There, there are some guidelines, I'll let Ms. Ewing speak to that because the timing of building such a, a building may not fit the parameters nor may the actual building itself.
Yeah, so there are additional parameters if we wanted to use the funds for capital expenses like construction, but the time constraint was, is gonna be the main one because these funds are only available through September thirtieth of twenty twenty four and we haven't even begun to design that facility yet.
So we have used some, um, funds that we actually applied for that we put towards the Berkeley air conditioning system and, and saved a considerable amount, I think about two million dollars by getting a grant, a federal grant to help with that already.
Ms. Ortega.
Does, does this that we just saw the overview of, is this, is this all equal to twenty eight million dollars ish that, is that what that, is that what this is? Twenty eight million dollar grant fund that.
The grant fund budget.
Yeah, that's this, that's that broken out.
Yes.
This will all add up to twenty eight million if I.
Approximately, I mean, we're estimating how much we're gonna be using in some of them for the remainder of the year.
If I sat here and, like, I just want to make sure I'm picturing the right column, okay?
Ms. Young.
Right, I, I noticed that on here, there's, we're still buying supplies for the mitigation of COVID. Is there a possibility that in the near, I don't know how much we're spending, it was, it was part of a larger group of expanses, but is there a possibility that at some point we're getting to get to the point where we're not expanding as much money on those supplies?
I, I think it's very likely that we will not spend as much in, in the incoming year. However, when you think of the, all the air systems and the purifiers that we put upgraded our air filtration systems, we do need to keep buying. we do need to keep buying the supplies to change those filters.
Right, supply, I understand about the filters.
That actually impacts not just the pandemic, but flu season and and everything to do with air quality in our buildings.
Right, and I appreciate that. I did have a question about, um, social distancing. Do we have an any indication of how much longer or are we, are the CDC guidelines what we are using for the social distancing in schools? Is that what where that's coming from?
Yes, initially, over the last two years, the the guidelines for schools were different from other places. It was three feet between students, otherwise we could never have got our students back in the classroom. Um, we have not changed those as yet. Um, so for the most part, students will will sit three feet apart, but they do work in groups and they do have reading on the floor and they, there are times when they are inside of those guidelines.
Okay, because, um, I mean, and who is is the school division? I'm I'm trying to understand who are we enforcing the guidelines or is there a mandate from some organization to enforce the guidelines for the three feet?
I'm not sure of the answer to that. Mr. Keefer, Ms. Bourgeois, do you want to jump in of where we are in the guidelines right now? I know they've been changed over the last few days, but I think that is mainly to do with masks.
Right, mainly.
But I concur. It is mainly to do with masks. Um, I I think that what we have done, Ms. Young, over the course of of the entire last two years and will continue to do into the spring is make adjustments as as needed, es- especially to try to return to levels of normalcy as we're able to. So to the word mandate, I I don't believe that there is a a mandate in place, but there are suggested protocols and best practices.
Okay, but those were i- initially, um, laid out for us. What organization initially laid them out? Wasn't that the CDC?
It was in consultation, then then CDC flowed through to the Virginia Department of Health and Virginia Department of Education.
Okay.
Um, I I appreciate what you're getting at, Ms. Young. I do want to make sure we stay on topic with the grant funds and it 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 kind of ties in there, but I would do want to make sure we stay on topic. And if there are other questions around, you know, social distancing, maybe we reserve those for our next item for WJCC.
I can also bring them up in board comments if you prefer.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments around grant funding?
I think the kids are going to be super excited about. I know we talked with the high school students about outdoors, spending some of the money for outdoor. They want to really get out eh outside sometime, outside of the classroom. And also with the sensory rooms, I know that, um, even in classrooms I saw seen cooldown corners. So there there might be a a basket with some head, um, canceling, noise cancelling, um, headphones or even a dark space sometimes because the lighting or fidget toys cost a fortune. So a basket of fidget toys. So I think just to let you know, those are some of the things that are very expensive, but that's great to be able to use those grant funds for as well.
And to keep kids in class.
Yeah, to keep, yeah. It's just a play, and MTSS really supports that. Um, it's one of their options to go choose one of those places to go to to calm down and get themselves back in order. Just to give you a little bit more clarity of what.
Yes, Ms. Young.
I just, um, like to see all of the different options for the the tutoring and the support for, um, kind of getting us back to where we need to be for, uh, learning loss or, you know. So I appreciate that. I think some of our our speakers tonight referenced wanting to see tutoring and it's nice to know we're doing that, um, already and have been doing that. So I just wanted to make sure that we all know that that is the tutoring piece is a very important part of the expenses that we are are using with our grant funds.
Ms. Ordigo.
Um, when it comes to the, uh, convertible learning spaces and sensory rooms, I I understand what a sensory room is, but just space-wise, are these are these, are we having these rooms that, I know we said mostly elementary, but I we thought we have so little space in our elementary schools. Where where are these rooms coming from?
I think generally the spaces are within the actual classrooms. They're just a a corner in a classroom. We create that kind of environment for students. Now, the spaces that Ms. Bourgeois was referring to may be slightly different.
It it could be a combination. It really does just spend depend on space that's available in in the, um, in the, uh, in the particular school. So for instance, in in one of the middle schools, there's a stu- there's a a special education classroom that has a small room attached to it, and that is their their sensory area. So it's a separate room, but it's really attached to a classroom. So it really depends on where the school has identified as an appropriate space.
We didn't have that before, correct?
We had some. We've we've added to that.
All right, uh, I maybe I can take a moment. I so I guess privilege of the board chair going last many of my questions have been answered, asked and answered, or at least presented. Um, so I too was interested. There's a lot of numbers here. Um, and we know that it and generally we saw funding begin to be poured out towards localities, um, in the later part of twenty twenty, uh, mid to later part twenty twenty. Uh, my first question is on page two coronavirus relief funds dash city slash county. What is that telling me when it says city slash county? Was that passed through?
Those are passed through to us from the city and county, a portion of their coronavirus relief funds.
And that was the only item that was passed through. Uh, after that, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm I believe they provided those funds when we were moving to a virtual environment to take us to one-to-one. They helped with the funding for that at that time.
Thank you. Um, I just for me, I think it it would be helpful to note just a total received. Um, historically total received, uh, grant funding for coronavirus relief as, um, it encompasses SR one, two, three, G E R. I don't even know what G E R is. I apologize. Um, but there are so many different acronyms here. I don't need to know now, but, um, you know, what is that accumulative dollar figure that we've received? Um, how much has been expensed? Um, I guess either to date or projected. And again, not asking for those unless you have them, but they would be helpful. You you do have that? Did I miss it?
If you want to go back one slide, you'll get a sense of what's been used to date and what is still to to be used.
Because
So the combination of this slide and the next shows the award amount, so
That includes ARP.
In total, it's about twenty-two point two million, I believe.
Yep, that's right.
And the reason I ask is going back to Ms. Ordigo's question about twenty-eight, there's there's that number floating around. And I've never not actually ever seen that number. Is that an actual number ARP funding in the amount of twenty-eight million?
Um, so we've amended our grants budget this year each time we've gotten one of these awards. So for example, for the ARP, we amended our grants budget for the total award amount. So I believe that's what Ms. Ordigo is referring to.
It was last ti- last time, right? We added, I think we added a hundred thousand dollars and it total, the it came to twenty-eight points. Unless I'm remembering that number.
Yeah, I don't remember the number offhand, but that's the total of our whole grants fund. So that includes the grants we get every year, title one, title two, all of them.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you for explaining that. Okay. Okay, um, and so with the, um, American Relief Plan dollars, SR one, two, three, are one, two, and three are all ARP, just from my own.
Just SR three is considered, yes, ARP.
Are are there, is there a dollar figure that is unallocated?
Yes, I believe that's on one of the slides as well, and it's going into next year, what we still have to spend. If you look at the very right-hand side of the slide.
Yes, out of the twenty-two point two million in total, we're anticipating carrying forward ten point eight million into next fiscal year.
That's carry forward. Does that also mean that there are no projected expenditures attached to those ten point eight? Does that make sense? Do we have plans for that ten point eight?
Yes.
Yeah, so the, I guess that's what I'm getting at when I say unallocated. Like, are there any dollars that, uh, we know use it, lose it that we may potentially lose because we don't see a direct, um, purchasing opportunity as it relates to the requirements for these?
If we look at the the slides that that we just went through, we've actually identified what that money will be spent on over next year. This is the main, one of the main slides right here. So it is allocated. There's a lot of personnel, our, for example, our permanent subs at every school right now. Uh, we're are a significant piece of that. Student service specialist, psychologist, um, math support teacher's been brought on next year to help with our deficit in math that you're about to hear about. Um, so mostly some personnel as well and some other fees as well over a couple of slides that that you already have.
So no unclaimed dollars is, I guess, my question.
Not at this point.
Thank you. I appreciate you bearing through a confusing set of questions, but it makes sense in my head. Sorry. Um, any other questions on grant funding? All right. Thank you, Ms. Young, Dr. Heron. We'll move on from that. For WJCC schools, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we're going to give a a very high-level update on on progress so far this year and really set the stage of of what schools have been working on this year and give you some very preliminary data uh, on student progress. And Mr. Walker and Dr. Worley are going to double team this one this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Setting the context for tonight's presentation will be a high-level division overview of our mid-year progress. However, it's important to note that the detailed work is happening at the school level where our leadership teams and staff really dig deep within their school data to see the faces of every student attached to a number, and they collaborate on updated strategies to promote progress for all students. Tonight's high-level mid-year updates will include division progress on student performance, attendance, assessment data, and next steps to support student success as we prepare to end the year strong. So before we jump into data points this evening, it's important for us to illustrate a true picture of all the work and supports our schools are providing students and families in order to successfully transition back to in-person learning. Five days per week while adjusting to our new normal or our new reality as we learn how to press forward in the midst of a continuing pandemic. So our schools had to set the stage for in-person learning. Our staff members literally help students learn how to be back in school again five days a week, engaging with peers and teachers while following school protocols and expectations for conduct. Many students miss significant transitions between school levels. For example, our current fifth graders' last normal year of school was in the second grade. Likewise, our eighth graders' last complete normal year of gr- of school was in the fifth grade, and now they are leaders in our middle schools. And finally, our twelfth graders' last complete normal year of school was in the ninth grade. So our children have missed many first and traditional events that build the climate and traditions of a school. So we've been teaching our children how to change classes between bells, reminding them that you do have to be present and engaged in school all day. We've had to reintroduce some of our traditions. We've had to bu- rebuild our school spirit. What does it mean to be a lion or a spider or a bear? And how do we reengage with clubs and activities? To make all of this happen, our teachers and leadership teams spent endless hours building relationships, conducting home visits, making positive phone calls to connect with families, building trust in the school community, and modeling and teaching expectations for behavior and academic engagement. Not only did we set the stage for returning to in-person learning, we had to set the stage for, um, helping our students with unfinished learning. So our students did miss significant time and hours engaging in the work in a school as we all adjusted to learning how to teach and how to be a student overnight in a virtual environment. So this took some time, but we did make significant progress and as our students are very resilient. Now that we're back to per- in-person five days a week, our teachers had to make a prescriptive plan for supporting all students and addressing that student needs as a result of unfinished learning. So therefore, our teachers initially assess student readiness by collecting multiple forms of baseline data to informed instructional planning. This year, our focus is on identified priority standards and essential skills needed to successfully complete the current year and current content while simultaneously providing o- opportunities for students to recover missed opportunities through participation in small groups or many lessons at other times of the day to capture missed content and rebuild that essential background knowledge. Individualized support is provided with after-school tutorial programs, tutoring opportunities during the school day, access to intervention blocks, and more. Finally, our staff and leadership teams and students set goals after analyzing data to make a plan for progress. Our leadership teams review multiple data points on a weekly and monthly basis, and they make adjustments as needed. Teachers use multiple data points from the classroom, from informal and summative assessments, from class lessons, from activities, and and more to to make mid-course adjustments and daily adjustments as needed to support our students. Mr. Walker will share a division-level update on our first data point of attendance.
Thank you, Dr. Worley. Keeping daily attendance is a necessary and critical task for schools. Daily attendance is one data point used to calculate accreditation per each school and is a primary focus for schools, especially since returning to in-person learning during the pandemic. The slide shows attendance rates for the division, broken down by marking period one and marking period two for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, which is the top row, compared to the twenty-twenty-one school year on the bottom row. Some important points of reference as we compare attendance data between these two school years are during the twenty-twenty-one school year, students began the year in a remote setting through the virtual academy or from home, and then following our paths to return to learn. Additionally, our students last year were considered present if they showed meaningful interaction at any point during the school day. This year, twenty-one, twenty-two, students must be fully present in school to be counted as present. That includes our virtual academy students who must be present on Zoom throughout the entire class period. This slide shows the number of students and the percentage of students in elementary school who received one or more failing grades on the marking period one report card and the marking period two report cards this school year with a comparison to last year. Again, this school year twenty-one, twenty-two data is on the top row, and the bottom row is twenty-twenty-one. As a reminder, there are four total grades per report card for elementary students. As you can see, both marking periods this school year reveal a reduction in the number of students receiving one or more failing grades on their report card. Next, Dr. Worley will share secondary report card data.
Like elementary school, this slide shows the number of students and the percentage of students in the middle school who received one or more failing grades on marking period one and the marking period two report cards this school year with a comparison to last school year. The boxes on the top row reference the current school year, and the bottom row is data from the this time last year. It is important to note that the middle school students typically have six to seven possible grades on the report card. The choice of electives impacts the number of report card grades. As you can see, we have a significant reduction in failing grades after returning to in-person learning five days per work week this year as compared to last year. The next slide shows the number of students and the percentage of students in high school who received one or more failing grades on marking period one and marking period two report cards this school year with a comparison to last year. The boxes on the top row reference the current school year, and the bottom row is data from this time last year. Both marking periods this school year show some improvement in comparison to last year. You may notice the high school numbers are a little higher than middle school and elementary. It's important to remember that high school students have the opportunity to earn eight grades each nine weeks. Additionally, the high school and middle school courses represent four core grades and multiple elective grades. At the high school level, the electives may or may not be associated with classes needed to earn a standard or advanced diploma for graduation. Another data point we're going to look at this evening is our fall growth assessments. Beginning with the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the Virginia Department of Education implemented new state growth assessments to measure progress in reading and math for grades three through eight. implemented new state growth assessments to measure progress in reading and math for grades three through eight. The fall assessment was based on previous grade levels content. For example, a grade four student took the fall growth assessment based on grade three content. The fall results will serve as a baseline data point to compare against the upcoming spring 2022 SOL results. As the purpose of the fall growth assessments is to sta- establish a baseline for measuring student growth, the fall tests do not have a minimum passing score and the VDOE will not report aggregate growth results for schools and divisions. But as a reminder, the accreditation benchmarks for Virginia schools have not changed. For example, the overall minimum pass rate for English is 75% and 70% for math to meet accreditation expectations. Next, Mr. Walker will share additional information on fall growth assessments.
As Dr. Worley stated, all grades three through eight students took a new Virginia reading and math growth assessment in late September this school year. Scores were grouped into three broad categories by the Virginia Department of Education. As you can see on the left, 41% of grades three through five students demonstrated math readiness for learning new grade level material, showing that the students have a good baseline knowledge of last year's grade level content and mathematics. Forty-seven percent of students are showing they may, may need some support with learning the new grade level material. And 12% of elementary students, grades three through five, are definitely needing supports to learn that new material and mathematics. The reading data on the right side shows a stronger performance with 60% of grades three through five students showing a good baseline knowledge of last year's grade level content with 29% of those grades three through five students needing some support and 11% of the students definitely needing support to learn new grade level material with reading. Overall, our elementary students need more direct math support.
Similar to the elementary data, middle school students also demonstrated a need for more support with mathematics direct instruction. Eighteen percent of middle school students showed a definite need for math support to learn new grade level material, while 46% of students might need some support and 36% of students demonstrated readiness to learn new grade level material, showing that the students have a good baseline knowledge of last year's grade level content and math. The reading data on the right shows a stronger performance with 70% of grades six through eight students showing a good baseline knowledge of last year's grade level content and 20% may need some support, while 10% of students definitely need support to learn new grade level material and reading. The last two slides provided summary data regarding student readiness for learning based on the fall growth assessments. Schools are already engaged in strategic progress monitoring and tiered interventions to facilitate student growth in areas of a need. This data is highlighted and discussed at the school level in weekly, monthly and mid-year data meetings. Next, Mr. Walker will share information about the fall math data.
Similar to the new Virginia growth assessments, the MAP assessments, the measures of academic progress, also use a growth over time model to evaluate students' current and trajectory achievement in mathematics and reading. Based on the NWEA linking study for MAP growth, any students in the yellow band of 41st percentile or higher is considered achieving at grade level and on track for SOL test success in reading and math. So let's take a look at an example of fourth grade student. You can see on the left side the historical data on this student from grade three, fall 2020 with a score of 181, which falls in the orange color band, which is about the 21st percentile to the 40th percentile. Following that same student's performance to the spring of 21 on the map, the score of 193, roughly 39 to 40th percentile, right on the edge. Then during the fall of 21, the same student on the MAP assessment scored a 191, approximately the 37, 38th percentile, still in that upper orange band. The trajectory from NWEA shows this student continues to need additional academic support throughout the school year to accelerate achievement over into the yellow color band of the 41st percentile or higher. The next two slides will reveal the percentage of elementary and middle school students scoring in the yellow band in both reading and mathematics. These graphs show overall student achievement for the percentage of elementary students, grades three through five, achieving above the 40th percentile, which again means on target for grade level instruction and on track for SOL test success in reading and math. The solid yellow graph shows that 73% of elementary students in grades three through five scored above the 40th percentile on the fall MAP reading assessment, which is a slight drop from the previous fall of 2020 performance at 77%. On the right side, the mathematics scores are showing that 68% of grades three through five students scored above the 40th percentile, which is about the 1% difference from the fall of 2020. As a reminder, the fall of 2020 was not a traditional learning environment. Most students were participating in remote instruction from home and also tested remotely from home for the MAP assessment. Therefore, the fall of 21, that data in solid yellow portrays a more accurate baseline of student readiness for grade level instruction this school year, according to the MAP assessments.
Middle school saw similar performance in reading with 73% of grades six through eight students performing at or above the 40th percentile, which is on target for grade level instruction and on track for SOL test success in reading and math. In math, on the right side, you can see a significant difference from the fall of 2020, 78% to the fall of 2021 at 59% performance. This year, the change in math is largely due to the Algebra I students not participating in the MAP assessment. The Algebra I stu- students took the IXL diagnostic assessment because it is more tightly aligned to the content being learned by students. It is important to note, this is a fall-to-fall comparison. We will access updated MAP data later in March and schools will again use this data to make additional adjustments and incorporate strategies to support all students, including additional individualize, individualized intervention as necessary to support all kids. Mr. Walker will now share next steps and strategies we are using to address unfinished learning and prepare all students for a successful end of the school year.
And we'll go through it forward. Okay. Moving forward, our schools will continue to embrace the work and take steps to ensure all students have exactly what they need to grow, learn and transition successfully to the next grade level. Targeted daily instruction remains a top priority with a focus on engaging the students and supporting the development of those essential skills to master the content and move forward. Finding multiple ways to engage students in the work and connecting them to their school community through activities is paramount. A continued focus establishing strong and positive relationships builds the foundation of trust and ultimately, success. Additionally, the focus on attendance, having students present for in-person learning is a top priority. Schools engage with multiple strategies to proactively get students to school, such as intervention plans, phone calls, positive phone calls home too, home visits and letters if a student starts to become chronically absent. Finally, we continue to provide individualized support for students in need with access to multiple resources and strategies. For example, we have 40-plus academic tutors working across our nine elementary schools. We have increased school counselors in our schools supporting students' needs. We continue to move forward, developing our new normal while supporting every student every day. Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron and board members, this concludes our presentation this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a high-level division overview of mid-year student progress. Please remember, the detailed work is happening at the school level where leaders, teachers and support staff see the faces of every kid attached to all of this data and they capitalize on the power of collaboration and teamwork. We're happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, not so much a question, a comment. Um, and I think it's really important to point out that students who do fall behind, um, if the instruction is targeted as you, as you indicate here and it's individualized, they could actually progress at a faster rate than they would have under normal circumstances. So those, those are really two areas and, um, I, I know you guys know about that and it's really, but that's really important. It's that, and it's important for parents to hear that as well is they, I know that they're really concerned that their kids are falling behind by targeted instruction and, um, individualized. That doesn't mean it always has to be one-on-one, but that it's, um, it's geared specifically for that particular child, um, that, that rate of, uh, improvement, uh, is faster and they get back on track, uh, faster than they, uh, than they would have if they, uh, you know, had, had remained in the sting, in the same setting. So that's really, uh, that's really good to see.
Okay, Dr. Beers, Ms. Cook?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and thank you, Ms. Dr. Beers. I, uh, I appreciate your remarks. And, and thank you for the presentation, all that went into it, not only creating the presentation, but the work that, um, informed it. I mean, it's, it's incredible, the heavy lift that you all have done. And I particularly appreciate the opening remarks and, um, you know, really highlighting the importance of re-establishing culture in the schools. That I can attest to that as a, from a parental perspective, that that's been a really heavy lift that I'm not sure anyone really anticipated. Um, kids came back, you know, socialized very differently, uh, depending on what they experienced at home. Um, and kind of addressing that in the school buildings has, has been, uh, as I've visited schools, I've seen that firsthand. Um, so, but I do have, um, two questions or, or two requests, rather. I don't have any questions, but two requests. The first is a couple of the slides early on about attendance and grades aren't. If, if you could go back and label them, I'm just thinking about it from a transparency perspective. If you're a member of the public and you're looking at that, you, you may not understand what you're looking at because it doesn't really, it, it, um, talks about report card marking period one and two, but it doesn't say what that's representing. So if, if that could change, that would be great. Um, and then on those slides, those comparison slides on attendance and report cards, uh, Dr. Worley, based on your opening remarks where you talk about the last normal year was so many years ago, I really think, I took that to heart and I think you need to go back four years to compare. I think comparing to last year is really not very helpful. So I'd, I'd like to see the attendance and the report card data, the same data for, for four years back so that we can see. So if we could get that as well, that would be very helpful because again, last year was such an anomaly. Comparing anything to it, I think has limited value. So, um, so that, that, those are my requests. Thank you.
Ms. Ham?
Am I, no, I think she was next. Were you, weren't you next?
I don't, I don't. It's okay. Go ahead.
Let you fight over it. Ms. Ham?
Um, I had the same, the same kind of general, um, comments that Mrs. Cook had. Um, I don't know, four years, but I would at least like to see 2019, the last, the, the year before COVID hit, because that to me gives me an idea of how much, how off we are from our last normal year. So and like you said, I think some of the, the stats are so difficult in 2020 to know. We had half the kids in virtual academy, half the kids were in hybrid, half the, we had kids that dropped off the face of the earth. So I, I think 2020 is just such a weird year that for me, I, I'd like to see 2019. Um, also, I really would like us to, with that targeting, um, instruction and tutoring, I'm, I am concerned about the high school, uh, failures. That's, um, I was, with, with 2020 being so wacky and you've got in marking period one, 31% failure, right? And then you've only got 25% in 2021. So that to me, since we've really got a target tutoring and special instruction for our high school students. So that's, that's a, but thank you. This is very, very helpful. I, I really appreciate all your work with it.
Ms. Sorta go?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first one relates to, um, what you said in your opening about having to re-establish school spirit and traditions and all the things that kids have, have missed that, that we've all missed, that teachers and, and everyone else has missed as well. How are those, um, how are we going about re-establishing those things? What activities are, are able to come back? Are they coming back district-wide? Is it school by school? Are there, is it pretty consistent or are there still inconsistencies? I think we heard from a speaker today, certain things, you know, there might still be a fifth grade drive-through graduation, um, is that still necessary? Or, you know, I think we hear from some schools are able to have a dance, some schools are not having a dance. Who's making those calls?
I can speak for, to middle school and high school first. Um, it's, it, the high school students first ventured back into activities with VHSL athletics. And so we've slowly transitioned as, um, following those guidelines. And we try to provide our high school students with remote opportunities to be in things like clubs the first year and, and gradually we've, we've, um, pretty much added things back into what we're doing. Right now, we are, um, trying to provide every opportunity that we can for students following all the guidelines previously with the masking and social dis- distancing, which has changed now. Um, and for the most part, we're on target to do most things, um, normally. Uh, we, we are held, uh, you know, accountable for like, we, we don't want large, you know, overflowing gyms and things like that. So we're, we're making sure that we're following all the guidance for that as far as big events. Our middle school, um, principals are going to do the drive-through stepping up again this year. That might be the one thing that's similar to the last year that they thought went really well. Um, we are discussing our spring events now. So we're not totally where we were pre-COVID, but at the secondary level, we're making, um, some progress in advancing that.
Are those decisions made at the district level and then, and then told to principals? Are our principals making some of these calls themselves or teachers making some of these calls in their individual classrooms?
We, we have conversations weekly with our principals and talk about what's going on in their building, what's the level of their staff, how are they feeling, what are they comfortable with? And we've gradually added things in. So they've been a part of the decision-making, um, all along, weekly, uh, sometimes daily, in conversation.
But so if one principal says, staff at my school, they're not so comfortable with this, so maybe they don't, do they have that ability to say, well, we're not going to do this, but this principal might say, we're going to go ahead?
Pretty, we're pretty much consistent with activities. I mean, every school's running athletics. Every school has their clubs. You know, we're competing in district choir and state choir and state band and all of those things. We're not doing overnight field trips right now. Um, but for the most part, we're doing our normal, as normal as we could possibly be. And principals are a part of those discussions, uh, like I said, on a weekly basis with us. Um, and we make decisions collaborative together for what we think is the best next step so that we're being inclusive and giving all kids the same opportunities.
It's hard to remember even tonight when we're sitting without masks where we were in January and that is not very long ago in terms of not hardly been able to keep students in a classroom because of the number of, of teachers absent and students absent. So we've just been out and we're still in the midst of mid-year, uh, meetings with, with principals and, and their, and their leadership teams. And that has been incredibly interesting and limiting for all of us. We know what we've heard it, but when we heard it all at one time, there's been such a focus on getting students transitioned back to some normality in school, building relationships, making sure of there's issues, counselors following up, dealing with behavior issues that weren't there before and trying to reteach the War Hill way or whatever it happens to be because the students don't know about it. And so that has been a huge focus, uh, with the academics coming in, uh, you know, very much in behind. What's exciting right now, I think for the first time, we can abso- absolutely totally focus on, on academics and start to push in every direction with that because we're not worried about teacher absenteeism, which has become less every single day. So we're right in that moment of, of really moving forward to address all of the needs. And some of the graphs that Mr. Walker and Dr. Worley were showing tonight, those represent individual students. Principals and teachers have that. those represent individual students. Principals and teachers have that. They're also getting a sense of how to address the needs based on that information as well. And that's what they're focused on right now, is really getting down to every single student who needs help and making it happen. It's pretty, it's very impressive to see. And thank you to all of our principals listening tonight and our teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Ms. Sorto, do you have follow-up?
I just have a different question, if that's okay. Just, can you help me understand, like, an example of the targeted instruction? So if we have a class, we have, you know, a math class, and the teacher notices one or two kids are just not able to keep up or they just can't. So what happens then?
I can answer that from the elementary perspective. We pretty much operate under small group targeted instruction in mathematics and literacy daily. And those groups are very fluid and flexible based on needs. And teachers are keeping informal and forming groups with that, especially with math. And our data showed that, that our students have more direct support needed with mathematics instruction. And in a sense, that makes sense to us because they've missed that direct instruction, that hands-on with manipulatives and so forth, in person with the teacher to move through from the concrete to the representational to the abstract. So that's a daily happening at the elementary level.
The same at middle school and high school. Teachers use their pre-assessments to formally assess background knowledge and what students need. We use unit assessments in math, and it's able, we're able to put students in groups. We have after-school opportunities. We have, the middle schools have intervention blocks where they pull groups of students out for specific instruction on whatever content or skill they may need assistance with. We were, Dr. Herron mentioned our mid-year conversations with our schools. And we were more than pleased to hear a lot of the principals speak to the progress in math at the middle school level and that they are really noticing that, you know, being back in person, the hands-on, concrete, direct instruction, face-to-face with their teachers, performing in activities, and the opportunity to pull students aside and have them rotate through groups is really making a big difference. And so we're seeing lots of gains there.
I could also mention as well, our collaborative teacher teams are working. They have unit assessments, they literally look at the data, they're breaking down and recreating their instruction differentiated based on students' needs from those who are not proficient and those who are and those who are above proficiency. And they're actually differentiating instruction every single day to meet the individualized needs of students. And that, in math especially, where those teams are operating, that's where we're seeing the greatest growth this year. And that's a lot of work at teachers, but boy, are they good at it.
It's a lot of work.
Go ahead, Ms. Sorto.
One last thing. Would it be helpful if there was more opportunity for volunteers and parents to come back into the schools? And are there ways we can start, you know, utilizing parents and the community to assist with that?
Up until recently, as we followed the CDC recommendations and guidelines, when we were in the highest community transmission rate of red, for how long back went on, it was our job to protect all that we could for in-person learning five days a week. And to be honest, we were hanging on by a thread as division, operationally. But yes, now that we have these new metrics and we're looking at this, we're strategically talking with our principals and looking at ways to peel back the next layer.
And our tutors have been in the schools. We've had an open door to those who are coming in to work on academics with students right through the whole pandemic. And we've built a very strong resource of tutors throughout our system.
Those are, like, trained in a certain way? Those aren't like parent tutors or?
These are academic tutors that have been trained, correct?
Thank you, Ms. Sorto, Ms. Huntley, and then we'll come to Ms. Young.
Yes, this is a great report. I enjoyed it. I think the part that I was more concerned with on the need support, of course, I know you have the data, but I was looking going, are there certain subgroups in there that needed more support than others? Was it due to attendance and the ones that were ready to learn? What did they have that the need support didn't get? But I know that you have all that, but for me, I'm still curious as to that part of it. But I know this was just an overview, but those were questions I had. But I'm sure you've got that worked out.
It's very similar at all three levels. I know that you're familiar with that. We do break it down, and we know the needs for individuals. And the teachers just dig in with the hard work. That's really what they do. But yes, we do break all that down. The data's very helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Huntley. Ms. Young?
Right. I do agree with, first of all, comments made about previous years having that, those statistics or that data from, I mean, Ms. Cook said four years and Ms. Hummel said three. I had written down 19 to 20, but even at the end of 20, there was, we already had gone into the pandemic. But I would like to have seen those figures previous to where we are now because I found this kind of shocking personally. And one of the things I do have to say, our teachers are working overtime. I totally recognize that. And so my comments, I just hope that they won't take them personally because I think they're doing an amazing job. But I did have a question about, first of all, we've got 59% of our students, I'm talking specifically about math at the middle school level, that they're not on target. That means that 41% of our students aren't there. And I do understand that there's probably, they're probably at all different stages and all different places. But I'm very concerned about that because we know that in order for a student to be successful in algebra, they have to have those pre, those years that are before, before they even get to middle school, they have to have that. So I want to go back to elementary school, which is even worse. It's 64% that, well, I guess it's better. Well, on here, it's 68% I wrote down there. So there is some math that they have caught up on, but we still have 32% of our students who aren't there. And I guess, which brought me to what curriculum are we using? Are we, I mean, I do understand about the targeted instruction, but why? I feel like our teachers this year, they were, I don't think they were blindsided. I think they kind of expected it. But I think the, from what I've heard from teachers, that the work they've had to do has been pretty momentous to try and bridge this gap. The one thing that I found missing on here, which I would appreciate because that's kind of where both Ms. Huntley and I fall into that category of K through three, it was grouped together in the reading and math from K through three with the K through five. I would have really liked to have had a breakdown of K through three because those students that came in, that's the group that came in at kindergarten and third grade, this is their first normal, I don't know if we can even apply the word "normal" year. But I would appreciate more information about where those students are. They spent a whole year in virtual learning, part of a year in 2020 in virtual learning, all of 2021, most of 2021. And now we're in 2022. I'd really be interested in that group because that group has missed so many foundational, not just school spirit and school culture, but they've missed a lot of those very basic things. So Mr. Walker, if you could maybe give us a little bit more information. I'm very concerned about our little kids. They've missed a lot. And I know we've talked about unfinished learning, but I mean, it's gone all across the board. And I can't even imagine being in high school and never been to a dance as a senior, which many of our kids are in that position at this point.
Mrs. Young, we can certainly provide that information. I think what's interesting, the state assessment was given in the fall, but there's no follow-up. So we learned from that where our students were in the fall. But we do, we will have MAP data coming in in March, which will show us the progress from what you've seen tonight to where we are today. So this is not a reflection of where we are, but where we started and really where we're, and what we're doing to get there. So we'll certainly provide information going back to probably 1890 would be our best comparison with MAP scores in March when we get those. And I've tried to give you, maybe not a presentation update, but we'll provide the data for you.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess if there is any reason for maybe providing more support for our teachers, I would be certainly for that. They've done an amazing job this year. And we've been confronted with a lot of hurdles that, under normal circumstances, would not have happened. But thank you.
Ms. Young, thank you for your comments, but I have to say, you also make me feel pretty bad. I was a middle school and a high school student. I never went to any dances, and I didn't have a pandemic to blame it on. I don't know what that says about me.
I know. I'm just going to refer you to Will Smith in Hitch, and he was a nerd.
I don't pretend to know how to either, though. I don't want to miss anybody or skip over anybody. Dr. Beers, thank you.
Yeah. I don't want you to get upset about this, but I would take a different tact. I don't need to go back two, three, four years. I want to find out where those kids are today, and I want to run with them into the future. And I don't need, frankly, I don't need, you know, I know people think it's really important to go back four or five years. I don't think that's important at all. What's more important is, where are the kids now? What do we need to do to get them to move forward? One other thing I would point out, math was not one of my favorites. I'll be the first, but I did okay. I wasn't in love with math. And I do remember many years after I finished math that that was the one subject that, over the summer, kids would forget a lot of stuff. Reading is not, it's not a subject. It's like, once you learn how to read and understand what you're doing when you read, those scores, I'm not, I was not surprised at all that the reading scores were much higher than the math. Math scores are very much skill and topic-oriented. And if you didn't get them, it's going to show up when you do the testing. But I want to say that one more time. That's always been a subject where, over the summer, students forget math concepts. So they have, it just sort of goes away, and you start up again. I know that they've probably gone farther behind, but math is also one of those subject areas because it is so concrete, for the most part, that it doesn't take nearly as long to get back on track in math as it does in some other subject areas. So I don't want you to be upset with me, but I don't want to dwell too much on how well they did four or five years ago. My whole professional career is focused on kids who have challenges in reading and writing. And what, and one of the things that I have learned is that it is really important to start with where they are, not where they were, but exactly where they are. And I would say that whether it's elementary, middle school, or high schools. And again, I wouldn't surprise that the math scores were lower. I think it's even more obvious at the high school level because you have so many, so many very specific kinds of math courses where in elementary school, you get a taste of a number as you go along. But at the high school level, they're much more concentrated. It's much easier to lose track or forget about, forget those or have trouble with those because, as some of you may know, math curriculum is very compressed. And the incredible number of concepts that students are supposed to master in a relatively short amount of time. I know something about the math stuff today. I'll leave that for another day. Anyway, I think that's, I think what's important about that is for parents to realize that their kids will catch up the right kind of instruction, you know, at the right time.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Beers, I couldn't agree with you more, and I just wanted to clarify. I think there's a difference between looking at where kids are and focusing on where they can be in the future when it comes to an assessment around math or reading. And I agree with you. But where I think it's important to look back four years are data around attendance and how many kids are failing a grade. And those are two different things. Those are not achievement. They are indicators of other things. And that's the benchmark, I think I want to benchmark three or four years back against those things. That's important because I think attendance and failing a grade, which may or may not be correlated with achievement, as you well know, in terms of being able to understand content, I think they tell us something.
You respectfully disagree with me. I respectfully disagree with you.
If I can add to it, and I'll get to you, Ms. Sorto. I have two questions. Maybe I'll get to my questions. I hope to. But I don't want to take too much time on assessments, you know, where we are now versus where. And it shouldn't be a versus. I don't think it should be a versus. And I think you're both saying that, and I think that we can agree on that. I saw many of, and reflected on it in many of the same ways as many of my colleagues here. I, too, and we've heard it three times now, would be a fourth. I don't want to belabor the ask, but it would have been helpful, I think, for me to know what we, I guess, what we ended at in a full year, 2018, 19, 2019, 20, was not a full year. So what we ended at in that full year as relates to our return to excellence after the height of a pandemic. Clearly, we're seeing improvement. I appreciate seeing the improvement. We've asked for, you know, to see where areas we've made up ground since the pandemic or especially since last year, returning to in-person learning. So we're seeing that. As Dr. Beers indicated, and I would agree, I was not surprised to see math be that waning subject where English and reading was growing in a more steady manner. I struggled in math, and that's no, you know, that's irrespective of the matter, but I just wasn't surprised. But high school, those numbers, and I agree with Ms. Hummel, those numbers are still a little startling. And I think it's important to see that as it does relate to 2018, 19 because we, as a governing body or as administrators, can look at what is still different and where are some avenues of restriction or that have been highlighted here or just practical procedural requirements that we could peel back on to further the advancement in our high school achievement. So I think that, for me, I think that being able to see back, look back and look at where we are now as relates to when we were operating at a very high level before the pandemic is crucial to that, to future success. But absolutely, I agree, we've got to meet these students by name as they are individuals with where they are and recognize each one as an individual that has something to contribute to their own success. I appreciate Ms. Worley in looking at the individual successes of our teachers and what they're seeing on a day-to-day basis. It doesn't go without saying that they are working overtime in extreme conditions, for the most part, to improve the success of each individual student. So yeah, we, I agree. We need to be looking at each student as an individual, where they are, not imagining that they brought this upon themselves, this reality upon themselves, but helping them achieve success despite it. Two questions. One question had to do with accreditation. And this is a terminology that we've not really been focused on in the last few years. And I wonder, help me recall certain accreditation factors, were they put on pause or hold by the state? Yeah? And that has been lifted as of when?
The previous two years, the accreditation.
Previous two years, the accreditation. Requirements were waived.
And that waiver has expired, that's lifted.
Yes, there will be accreditation this year, but it will look very different because of the new growth assessments. And so there'll be a measure of how much students have grown this year from where they are. And that will actually help us towards accreditation. So to Dr. Beers' point, yes, we are very carefully monitoring and wanting to show the growth of every single student. From wherever they started at the beginning of this year, as well as trying to hit a target at the same time. So those two factors will weigh into accreditation for the first time and it's timely and I'm glad it's that way this year.
And you, I believe we saw two data points on accreditation, attendance and growth assessments. Were there any others that you would like to make us aware of?
This point in time, no, right.
Just those two.
Attendance and achievement.
Okay, okay. So that's all that the state looks at for WJCC School Division to maintain our accreditation going into this next year. Attendance and growth assessment.
Graduation rates.
Graduation rates.
Graduation rates, okay, okay. And then on that one data point, attendance, we see, I think, a little bit of improvement. If I have to jog my memory again, yep, a little bit of improvement. But does, do these numbers, have we successfully looked at quarantine? Or required quarantine days as it relates to attendance, not being in person?
Yes, if they were quarantined or in isolation, that was not counted.
Was not counted.
Against attendance.
So these are students that were not quarantined, they just didn't show up?
Right.
Across the state, that's the same, same way of of looking at attendance this year because of our extreme circumstances.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Ms. Ortega, let me come back to you.
Uh, yeah, um, so not to, not to belabor the discussion that was going on before about how far we should look back. It's not necessarily about looking back, but it would just be helpful to know what was typical. I don't even care what what year we look at. Because I'm sure there was, you know, in in no year was was it zero percent, like no one had a failing grade in any subject. So that that's all, it's like, was it, was it a jump from ten percent, was it a jump from two percent? That, I think that's what we're getting at with looking, looking back. That being said, have any of, have any of the standards for assessment changed in the last few years? So are we assessing in the same way and to the same standards?
I believe so. The this, the same grades, the same subjects, that's what you're referencing? Yeah, those remain the same.
So none of the, I know teachers are doing incredible work getting students caught up. But none of, none of the apparent catching up is because we've changed how we've assessed or because we've lowered standards?
No, no, but but what does factor in is growth this year, which I think is a much better way to assess students. If you go into a classroom at this level and you're end up, you exit at this level, that's growth for that individual student. And that factors more closely in for the first time this year as opposed to having to hit an artificial target.
Even if the the ending point for that, for a given student is not where perhaps they would have been pre-pandemic or should be in general.
Yeah, I think the standard is still the same to to pass, but there's some credit, we will get some credit for growth in that student's achievement. But the standard is still the same to to pass.
And have we always, and has fortieth percentile, that number, that's always been what we consider success?
With that particular data set, with MAP assessment, the NWA, hitting above that fortieth percentile. Is indicative of on-grade level and then trajectory for success when they did the Lincoln study. With the SOL test in reading and math.
And not every division used the MAP assessment. We brought it into our system so we could get down to that level. And predict where students would be and provide the remediation, but not every division uses MAP assessment. But that was something we use that equates to outcomes for students so we can intervene and and help.
Okay, thank you.
So just, so SOLs are just a a certain, you know, passing rate, whatever. But the MAP, the MAP assessments is a progress assessment.
That's our way of assessing where they are throughout the year, three times a year.
Three times a year.
That's an internal monitoring system for us. And the new growth assessment that the state has produced, we think may eventually take over the MAP assessment if if it still goes that way. But that will become an external assessment, not an internal monitoring system.
One that the state will impose.
That we had the first one, we showed the data on at the very beginning, that was introduced for the first time this year. But the MAP test we find is is very comprehensive, so it's going to be hard to let go of that. Because that's how we know what students are learning as we move along. That and our assessments in every unit and in every area.
Dr. Worley, Mr. Walker, I appreciate your report and all the information answers to our questions as well. Thank you so much. And are we going to see another one before end of school year? I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but.
Not sure, we'll certainly get you the information in some kind of report form. So do you know how students have progressed from this and to the the March MAP assessment and try to look back a little bit as well?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right, we'll move on to policies. We've got four. I think two of them were at my request. That our board policy committee take a look at. And this is the first one, nine point zero one, review revisions to policy BD school board meetings. Can I ask one of our policy committee members to enlighten us on your conversations?
Sure, sure. Basically, if you look at, I'm I'm bringing up BD. Is everyone on the same page? We just changed the wording so that we weren't putting the exact times on the the. Our meetings, but just saying that first and third Tuesday of each month or on dates and times designated. Because sometimes we, we give, in July, for example, we, we don't meet. And then other times we'll, we might meet the the first and the second, just based on. Elections, based on spring break, the summer, whatever. So we just thought this was more in line with our actual practice. And then, what else? So that was it basically for. For that policy. And, or Mrs. Young, is there anything else that I'm?
Well, the only thing I noticed that we didn't address in there was times.
Well, we had said that we were not, that that we specifically, yeah, took the time piece off.
Ms. Cook.
Yeah, so I'm, I I'm fine with taking the time piece off on a, on the policy because that is more binding. But just, you know, sort of fast forward to the SOP, I'm not okay with taking it out of the SOP. I do think that we need to state a starting time. So just somewhere.
Talking about nine point zero three, yeah.
Yeah, so I just, so I'm fine with it coming out of the policy, but coming out altogether.
Anyone else?
All right, and then the next one is policy BDDC. So if you look at the red line of that. Basically, we had a kind of a change in what we were going to be doing between our regular, our work sessions. And our regular school board meetings. So not really that much of a change. But we would do the closed, at our work sessions, we would do the closed session piece at the end. Rather than at the beginning. And the reason that we were going to change this is based on our superintendent's request. For making it kind of a a better working situation for her senior administration staff.
So how how would that work with personnel? And to help me understand how personnel discussion in closed session will work when we need to approve that in a public meeting?
We would, okay, so we would have to have our regular meeting, we would call our regular work session. And then we would go through our work session and then we would go into closed session. And then we would certify closed session, then come back into open session.
At that time, staff is departed.
On like line thirteen, we would take action on the closed session. Which is typically our personnel issues and we would take action on that and then adjourn. So basically, it is just, and and one of the things that is kind of nice about this. Is that for our work sessions at least, you, we're going to be pretty standard. On when our meeting time begins for the public. And then all the, the information that tends to be most important for the the public. The citizens' comments, all of our agenda items, our board and discussion, policies, et cetera, are all handled. Kind of before we get to the personnel issues and actions which happen in a closed session. Does that make sense?
I I think so, if if I may kind of run through it to see how it works procedurally. So what we're looking at doing is opening the meeting publicly, gabbling in publicly, calling the meeting to order. Going through work session business, regular meeting business, depending on the. The soup of the day and then going through the. Going through all those agenda items in public. The benefit in doing that first, of course, rather than going straight into closed session is that closed session could be as short or as long as it takes. Depending on what closed session items we need to discuss. Today, we were about ten minutes long. Because we had an additional closed session item that we needed to discuss. So it would prevent going long and it would also make sure that if we were really short. We weren't just sitting around kind of twiddling our thumbs waiting, staff's not waiting on us. So we get straight into our meeting, hold closed session at the end. Staff does not typically need to be there during closed session, except for Mr. Baker. Sorry, Mr. Baker. And I think that's essentially your recommendation?
Well, this was, this really came to the policy committee as a recommendation from the administration. So it wasn't something that the policy committee came up with on our own. It was a recommendation by the administration.
But as you were discussing it, you upheld that recommendation from the policy committee?
Right, right, right. I mean, we we are are fine with the administration's recommendation. To kind of make this change for the work session, really for our regular meeting. We're not, we're not really changing anything for our regular meeting. It's just, it's basically the changes for our work session.
Any, any comments or questions from, yeah, Ms. Cook?
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I really struggle with this and I'm all about, I would be happy starting our work session early. And our meeting early to accommodate staff. I'm mindful of the time right now, knowing that some of our staff members have to drive an hour to get home. And but I think having closed session at the end is problematic for three situations. And recognizing that it doesn't happen all the time, but it does happen. So when we have to meet with an attorney in closed session. Then they have to wait because they don't know when that closed session is going to start and that's going to cost us money. When we have to have a student hearing in closed session, then the student and their family has to wait and we don't know when that's going to start. And the same would be true, true for a staff hearing. And then also for the student and staff in particular, that could also impact privacy. When we have a student hearing before a meeting, usually that's two closed sessions prior. And then that family is able to get out or that staff member is able to get out before a meeting starts. And so I, so between privacy and money for attorneys, you know, so those issues are why I think it needs to be at the beginning. But then, you know, a compromise might be to have a time certain where, okay, the meeting might start early. And then at exactly, you know, six o'clock, we're gonna, or seven o'clock, we're going to stop and go into closed session and then go back to our meeting. I I think that's clunkier, but at least it's a time certain, particularly when you have families or staff members or whatever who are expecting a hearing. So I just wanted to throw those considerations out. But I I I think the way that we do it right now, particularly when I think about the privacy piece for students and staff who, if they ever have hearings.
Does anything preclude us from having multiple closed sessions within one work meeting? Meaning like in the situation where we might have a legal case or a student hearing. That we couldn't have that closed session be at the, at the beginning? Because those are very, we don't have those that much.
No, it's more often for us to have the attorney, and and I'm sure that's possible. But then that, then that changes this run of show, right? And so when our, when that's coupled with a closed hearing, that's, that's why we do it that way. And that also provides that buffer of privacy, which, you know, I mean, we don't, hopefully we don't have that many student hearings. But when we do, the student comes, the family comes, and then they're out before the people start gathering for the. For the regular meeting. And so I'd much rather err on the side of starting earlier.
I I I wondered the same thing and and I still wonder if we can't have two closed sessions, one at the top, one at the bottom. The closed session at the bottom is for our regular bi-month, bi-weekly, bi-monthly personnel issues. And then at the top, it's a as needed.
A placeholder for.
Placeholders and as needed that we can bypass. Is there something wrong with bypassing it if it's not needed?
I I mean, that makes sense to me to do some, I I'd be curious as to the, what the rest of.
Similar to, you know, okay, Ms. Ortega.
Well, just one thought to what Ms. Cook said about privacy. Currently, we're holding closed sessions in this room. And then we have regular meetings in the other, in the other building. So I could imagine that privacy could still be protected because we're not, we wouldn't, they're not leaving the same place that the people are gathering.
Right, well, and thank you because I'm still in the sort of James City County and Striker Center mindset for those, for those meetings. Or even here and there, you know, so we used to do it differently. So, I mean, from that perspective of where, of all of our meet, but not all of our meetings are here and there. What, you know, the work session one is the one you're thinking of changing, which is everything's here. I imagine the closed session would go back to there.
Public here. Yeah, we would probably have, we could either, we could even have it in the other building potentially.
So, yeah, but anyway, so I I I struggle with this and I'd rather just start earlier to accommodate staff than to make this change.
Dr. Beers.
Yeah, I agree, I'm not struggling, but I agree with you very much. I I really, I don't like the idea, sometimes our meetings go to nine thirty, quarter or ten. I don't like the idea of having a closed session that late. I I I like it, I like it early for the, you know, whoever might be involved in that. And I don't think we need to have two in a, you know, in a, in a meeting. I like, I I just like it the way it is now. I don't want to. I don't want to have to go through a deal with some of that stuff at ten o'clock at night. As we, maybe we wouldn't, would we have a break before we go to the closed session? I don't know, I just don't.
I was ready for a break an hour ago.
I took one.
I know you did.
I I would rather keep it in, for all the reasons that that you gave. I would like, I I'd like to keep it in the morning, at the, at the beginning of the meeting.
Ms. Hummel?
Yeah, I thought the idea was to start a little bit earlier, but try to accommodate people that don't get off work. Like couldn't start at four, some people get off at four thirty, but I like the idea of starting earlier.
Yeah, I think it could be both, but I, yeah, I'd like to hear from every, Ms. Ortega.
I don't know if this is still coming, but are we not, I thought we were changing the time, are we not, is this instead of changing?
Well, this gives us an opportunity to do that and so that's why. Well, this gives us an opportunity to do that and so that's why I kind of interjected there and said we could do both, we could start at four. And um you know, whole closed session at the end or the beginning or do two closed sessions and bypass the front end.
This is in conjunction with starting at four.
It could be, but well, we're talking about work session and regular meeting, so regular meeting, I think the proposition was to. Keep our regular meeting at six, six thirty.
For both, right?
Yeah, Mr. Doctor Beers.
Yeah, do we, I don't know. Can we just have closed sessions, like one meeting, do we have to have closed sessions?
That's that's my question.
Why?
So that Doctor Hearst can hire peo- hire people for hiring.
During a, before a work session?
We would have a a month between each opportunity to hire new people, especially this year where we've been hiring every single time. So so it is very important to have it, I mean, but again, as the board says, it could be at the beginning of or the end. Essentially, on on both, the beginning of both meetings would still work very well.
Um one of the things that I thought about in reference to what Ms. Cook said as far as privacy. If meetings were scheduled for the lawyer and student and staff. Um meetings that we needed to hold disciplinary hearings and things like that, if that could be done on the regular meeting day. That may, that would be held in here and because then we adjourn and go over to the other building and so the privacy would be preserved. Um that's just a suggestion, but um I I I I do think that privacy piece is incredibly important. Um so I I've thought about that too, thank you for bringing that up, cause I hadn't even thought about that.
And Ms. Young, we we could do that when possible, but sometimes we're under an actual deadline and a timeframe. To have a hearing, so as much as we would try to do that and that would be the best possible scenario, sometimes we we may not be able to do it.
Well, if that's, if with that being said, maybe it's best to have closed session at the beginning of a meeting.
I think I'm looking at heads nodding, shoulders shrugging, I think we're we're willing to keep it as is. So um was there a, going back to Ms. Cook's statement about our SOP. And um the time that we indicate our meetings would begin. Um is there interest to begin the work sessions earlier? I think a striking six and six thirty gives us the ability to do that or six thirty, the ability to do that. Do we have a recommendation from the policy committee as to when we would begin, I know Doctor Herr gave us a.
There, for me, there's, it it's kind of a toss-up between um. You you've got two things, you've got the people on this board who work full-time. And have um maybe a little bit of a difficulty showing up at four or possibly three thirty, I mean, uh that we have had. Um closed sessions that eh with a six thirty board start time, we're asked to be there at three thirty for closed session. So if we have a four thirty s- regular start time, we could be having our. Our closed session starting at like twelve thirty or one, which is hard for people who have childcare issues or work full-time. It it's an, it's an issue um for the board members. Uh it's also an issue, I think, of board of allowing public comments. If you start a meeting too early, then where do you put the public comments and how about people who are working full-time and can? I- is that going to limit um the community's uh ability to to come in? And speak to us uh if they're working, so it's eh, on the other hand, I I really feel sorry. For the people that are still sitting here that have an hour to drive, I mean, I, so I I do, I do see. That as well.
Wh- when does the county?
Um they both, the county and city both start one of their meetings early and I think the city, both are earlier than ours at four o'clock.
Four o'clock and one o'clock.
And one o'clock, um basically, you know, what we started to do was to look at what other systems were doing all over the eh region. And we're one of the few that that starts both meetings at six thirty at night and a lot of the work sessions, which really are. The detailed work of the board and presentations and discussions like we've had for several hours this evening, is that work session. Um some boards don't have public comment at both meetings, some only happen at one.
I'm okay, I guess, I'm, that's why I'm okay with a a different work session start time. Than a regular meeting start time, I'm o- I'm okay with that.
Okay, I'm with that too.
Um so e- especially if it if it helps the administrators that are having to be here really late at night, I.
But I mean, one of the things that we could also talk about then is uh a lot of these um meetings that that we don't have citizen comments. At every meeting too, we could, I mean, because it it is a work session and uh. But I don't know how.
That that, yeah, that gets into, eh again, how city and the county operate, they don't, um I, well, I can speak for, I can't speak for the city. I'm not confident on their public comment at work sessions.
Every meeting.
They do, okay, county does not and uh go ahead, Ms. Origo.
I mean, if we're, if we're moving everything around, you could always put citizen comment at the end. And then let people come af- you know, after work, if if we're, if we're ending-ish when they would be normally here to start. There's no reason they couldn't come and still give a comment at the end.
Yeah, that's what the city does at their first meeting is at the end, yeah.
Yeah, and that.
And possibly even right before board member comments and maybe, maybe there can be some acknowledgement of some of the comments, I think. You know, not a back and forth, but just a feeling of maybe a ma- more connection between citizen comment and board member comments. If if a board member would like to address something that's been raised, I I think it gives an opportunity.
Is there any uh appetite, I know on my part, I would be interested in seeing us look at providing a little bit more time. For a public comment, I know that uh we've been doing a minute and a half for, I I don't know how many months now. And for the most part, um folks get a minute and a half, but we're still having to cut some folks off right at the end. I wonder if an additional thirty seconds as we're looking at SOP uh would be warranted to provide public comment.
Yeah, I'm um, so a couple of things have been brought up, one is maybe not having public comment at both meetings and I'm. Eh and then also perhaps lengthening, I feel like we had a lengthy conversation and made a decision. And I would rather have that like sit for a while rather than changing either. Um so I I so I think we should stick with at both meetings for uh, you know, a minute and a half. Although I I think changing the ti- placement of in a meeting is is fine, I don't think that fundamentally changes anything, but. Um you know, I'm not opposed to changing that down the road, but I think, I just don't think it's been long enough frankly, I just think let it sit, um let it sit.
Well, one, one of the things that I've noticed. I'm sorry, when I, when when we've gone to a minute and a half is um uh a lot more of the comments are. Uh are be- are um better organized, they get to the point, they know they I, they only have a minute and a half. So it's important to get across what it is you really wanna get across and um and I I think it's, that's why. It's, I think it's a good idea to keep that, I like it.
And we haven't had to, um we haven't had to to give people, like they show up and they've prepared. And then we're like, uh-uh, you don't have that much time, you know, like that's been really nice for for everyone to just count on. They've got a minute and a half and if there's thirty of them, they've got a minute and a half, if there's, you know what I mean, it's nice, that's nice.
Well, I'll come to Ms. Origo and say, but for me, I I can say that for every speaker that comes up, my heart stops for a second. Because I'm like, please, you know, get to eh the heart of your concern, right?
Well, the other thing, I think.
Cause we do wanna hear everybody and we want, we we wanna hear the heart of their concern and so, um and some can get to that, you know, within that ninety seconds. Uh and some eh there there's a little bit of a struggle and I I don't disagree, Ms. Cook, that, I mean, on most things, I would like to see it similar. For a little bit longer, um I think on this, I I've seen enough me personally and uh I I just uh. I just wanted to ask the board, Ms. Origo, what are your thoughts?
I I was just thinking, since we haven't really made a dec- decision on um whether we're gonna do public comment at both meetings or not. But if if we're going to take away an opportunity for public comment, maybe in that scenario, we se- we think about extending it. And maybe if we leave it at every meeting, then we le- leave it the way it is.
But the public always has an opportunity to put their lone speeches in writing and send it to us as well.
And and as someone who. You still have to cut people off at three minutes, two minutes, whatever, I mean, having been in the chair, you you it, you have to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't, please don't misunderstand me, I don't mind that role, it's just, I I think we all agree, wanna hear everybody's perspective. And eh coming into this meeting, seeing the present, the the recommendation and knowing uh what what we're gonna discuss. My mind was kind of trained to um making work sessions about work sessions, um doing the business of the work and and. I'll I'll leave that part aside, but um providing more time, as Ms. Origo mentioned, providing more time. Uh I don't know how much more time, but more time at a regular meeting for a public comment, uh if we're taking away from a work session, so just kind of my thoughts.
I I will say though, public comment before a work session in response to something that's here. Is the time that I have experienced over the years, the most meaningful connection to between what's said and then how, what what comes out of the discussion. Because it's when we're hashing things out.
Sure.
And so um.
No, I get that.
Yeah, so so I um. So.
Young, I think Ms. Young, and then we'll come to you, Ms. Hunley.
Well, I'm just trying to think about, so basically what I have heard, I mean, I mean that's. So you be, are we basically saying we wanna keep the agenda the same as we currently have and and. I mean, that's what I'm trying to understand, because when it goes back to policy for Julia, I mean, we have to hash this out again, I just wanna make sure I understand, so.
Yes, uh so from what I'm hearing, so far what I'm hearing is that we, for both meetings, we do not begin with closed session. We'll bring the meeting to order publicly, it sounds like rather than taking closed session to the end of the meeting, we're gonna keep it at the beginning. But after we open it publicly, own a closed session, deal with closed session items, then reconvene the meeting and certify closed session. It sounds like the work session and it looks like the work session begins with at four o'clock. Gathering for closed session to then go into the work session portion of the meeting at four thirty. And then regular meeting, six and six thirty.
How does that affect our our board members that work? I mean, I'm, that's what I'm, I guess I don't work, I can, I can be here.
I mean, I I think, I mean, I can make it work for one meeting a month, I think it would be harder to do it. Two meetings a month.
Meeting a month, it would be doable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's not ideal.
I mean, I'm just talking about gen- childcare also, so, okay, I mean, I think. So is everybody agreed that that's what we want, Greg, is that what you you're you're hearing people say, that we wanted, that's what we're gonna do?
And then the, and then the uh only portion I'm not clear on is um public comment at both meetings. Do we wanna continue to allow bu- public comment at both meetings or take away from work session and only have it at regular meeting?
I'd rather have it at both.
Keep it at both, okay, are we talking about moving public comment to the end of the work session or keeping it at? Uh cause I I do appreciate Ms. Cook's perspective about hearing what they're saying, cause that forms are, yeah, often forms are. Thought process around the business of the work that we're gonna discuss, we get it at the end, it's kind of a moot point.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
I guess we just keep everything the way it is.
Okay.
Just change the start time.
But but how, I mean, how many of the citizens are gonna be able to, I mean, is it kind of a moot point?
Thirty.
To have it, I don't know.
Well, we're not get, we're we're, we're not getting as many each each meeting now as as we as we were in the past. Um um I know you don't like to hear about this, but historically, we we went through on many years. Where um the only public comment was done during the regular meetings and then it's for kind of the same, the reason. Was it gave you more time to do the, you know, uh to do it needed to be done in the work session. You just had more time and and there weren't interruptions and um um but I, you know, I'm, I'm not. Witted to 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 that, but I I I it is something to think about.
Okay. So what are we thinking, leaving public comment at the beginning or moving it to the end for work sessions? So I think for regular meetings, we would keep it as is. Ms. Cook?
I have no opinion, you know, I I I see benefits to both.
Yeah.
Uh I mean, if we do it at the end of the work session, in response to what we've already discussed, it's, there's still time then, I guess, to impact our. Decision at the next meeting, um, cause I, you know, I I I do think that having public comment at four thirty on a workday. To be viewed uh through a cynical eye, could, it could be, then again, we wouldn't necess- oh, sorry, through a, sorry, through a cynical eye.
And I I feel that way as well, I wouldn't wanna look like we are technically giving opportunity to speak, but practically taking it away.
Yeah.
Um the same time, when we, when, if it's at the very, if it's the very end, what time do people show up? They don't know.
That's the, yeah, that's another whole issue, because, yeah, because.
They might be hanging out there for an hour and a half, if it's, you know.
Yeah, it is, it is done at the end of meetings by other divisions as well, it's not unusual.
Maybe it just make us stay on track and and not uh draw out a meeting talking about ending a meeting early.
At ten o'clock.
Yeah, it's rough.
Um, okay, so as the policy person, this is what I'm hearing. That we are um, we're gonna do the, we're going to do the work sessions, starting at four o'clock. With closed, well, open, closed, then.
Reconvene.
Go and reconvene at four thirty, that would be our normal timeframe, uh we would look at our um. Moving public comment to right before board comments, is that what I'm hearing, right? Is that, is that what I'm hearing for just the work sessions?
Just work.
And then keeping everything exactly the same for our regular sessions, like the same as they are right now.
Not exactly, eh eh we would still open publicly, go into closed session and then reconvene.
Don't we do that anyway?
We don't, we had not been.
It just kinda started, but.
It just started, but that's the.
It's a procedural matter, but yeah.
Oh, 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 got it, but yeah, okay.
Yeah, for time purposes.
Got it, does that make sense?
I got it, yeah.
It's crystal clear.
And then we also added the pledge allegiance, I think that was different, new, was adding the pledge allegiance officially to the regular board meeting. That was.
We're not going to do it during the, I don't think it work sessions.
I'm not sure I fully understand this, are are you, are we saying um public comment will be done. Um at the work session, at the end of the work session.
Yes, pretty much at the end.
Before board member comments at the end.
To to give the public time to that, anyone who's working.
So, yeah, up here, seven thirty, so what are they, what are they, eh so they're gonna gradually come in? Rather than at the beginning, see, I still, I like where it is.
Um.
And I I also think that um if you can't make it to the four o'clock meeting, you certainly can make it to the six thirty meeting.
If if.
You're just saying if you can't, you know, keep, keep everything the way it is.
They can, they they're.
Yeah, there's a lot of retired people, people that aren't, eh eh, yeah, I mean.
And and um and those who can't, there's still an opportunity to address the board, um you know, two weeks later. And you don't change anything.
I see that too, I I.
Or or maybe we need a couple of more meetings to.
Let's let's see, if we're if we're willing to agree to disagree and we'll just kinda go around and.
It is ten o'clock now.
Go around and I think Doctor Beers would like to keep it as is, Ms. Hunley?
Yeah, what is this?
Hunley, like to keep it as is or move to the end, okay, Ms. Origo?
Talking, what are we talking about?
Work session, public comment, keep it as is. Or move it to the end before board member comments?
I liked it at the end.
Okay, so you wanna move it to the end, Ms. Hunley, okay.
I I like the idea of the end, but I I do. I I like the idea of the end, but I I do see the logistical challenge of not knowing what time to tell people that that is and.
Okay, Ms. Young?
My my concern is still when would they be heard?
Yeah.
So I think I would prefer that it was at the beginning.
Okay, at the beginning?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, Ms. Cook? You wanna go last, Ms. Cook?
No, I um, I I guess my instinct is to keep it the same and. Because we're already changing one thing and then change um the time, you know, change the order later. If if it's having a precipitative, precipitous negative.
Take a look at it later, keep it.
I'd rather just see, yeah.
So you said. For now.
For now, keep it, and if it's, if the if the number of people who come tanks, then change it.
Okay, so that's two to keep it as is, three to move it to the end, Ms. Hummel?
I I'm gonna say I I appreciate what Dr. Beers just said, because, and I appreciate the fact that. Uh letting people not have to sit there and wait forever and ever and ever, and so I'm gonna.
Don't you do it to me.
I'm gonna go with keeping it the same order, just changing the time for the the work sessions, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Now, where are we?
I think I need to weigh in.
The one disadvantage of of having it at the end is people arrive and sign up before the start of the meeting. And you know the number of people coming to speak, and so if we do change the time, that's gonna affect that process.
Yeah, you're right.
Which actually works very well, because we, there is a time you come and you you come and fill in a card, you're there before the start of the meeting. And then we shut that down and move on.
Yeah, you're right.
So we will lose that ability, evidently, and do an online sign up.
So I move that we keep it as is, based on our superintendent's recommendation.
With the four o'clock.
Here, can I just make one comment about that?
I felt like we had finished that, but go ahead.
Agreeing with you, we're agreeing with you.
No, 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 it's okay, no, um uh if, for, you know, if we do, work sessions start at four o'clock. And we do a uh, we do a closed session, that goes till four thirty, okay? Then there's, we do a number of things at the beginning of a board meeting. We're gonna get up to five o'clock before we're even gonna tell people they can come and up and talk. So I I'm thinking that that's, you know, uh keeping it, I'm with Julie.
I think we're all on the same page and we're gonna, so does Policy Committee understand what we've just discussed? Sincerely, I wanna make sure.
If if we cut back with something harebrained, you can talk to us.
For another forty-five minutes.
So for work sessions, for both uh meetings, work session and regular session, we're going to leave public comment um at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
Uh and everything else, I think was pretty clear. All right, thank you, guys, let's move on to uh nine point zero four review revisions to policy. I I C A field trips and excursions.
Phew, this is not ours.
We skipped the S O P, I mean, the standard operating.
I was looking at that the whole time, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, but we.
Thought we were looking at S O P.
No, we, no. Well, it's pretty much the same though.
Looking at.
Honestly, it it's, it's everything that we were just talking about.
Because it covers the timeframe.
It was the order of business.
Uh but but we weren't just limiting that, I mean, I looked at the whole S O P, I had some.
Oh, I know, oh, I was, I mean, no, I was looking at our red line, uh the red line parts of our.
Well.
S O Ps.
But it said.
Can we just?
Can, can we move on to nine oh four and then come back to nine oh three, is that okay?
Sure.
I apologize, Ms. Cook, and I apologize to you, sorry for the confusion.
No worries at all. It's okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and of course, Dr. Heron. I thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to discuss the revisions with policy I I C A, which again is our field trip policy. I promise in just a few minutes, I will take the time to share with you the rationale for the updated revisions. I will go through some specifics with regards to the changes that have been made, and then certainly welcome any questions that you have. So to begin, the rationale for the updated policy I I C A starts with the fact that the policy was last revised twenty years ago, June two thousand one. Um included with that rationale is that we wanted to ensure that our current policy reflects the state's most current wording. And updated expectations with regards to the alignment of our V S B A model policy. Specific changes to this new policy, or revised policy, I apologize, include the following. We've deleted the word extended field trips to align with the more inclusive V S B A model policy language of field trips in general, reflecting that all trips. Not just those of an overnight or an extended nature. We also added the word superintendents designate to line number twenty-six. We've exchanged the former department title of Office of Academic Service to our more current title, which is Department of Curriculum Instruction. And we've added specific language from the V S B A model policy that provides a clear definition and description of the field trip experience. Outlines the considerations that should be made before proposing a field trip. Reflects our current stance on equity and ensuring that no student is denied the opportunity to participate in a field trip due to lack of funding. And notes the release of school board responsibility for privately sponsored trips that are not a part of our education program. With that, I am happy to take questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What do we think? Any questions?
We're all out of questions.
Out of questions.
Can we have public comment on a field trip?
All right, well, thank you for the information and the update on this policy, and I think just from my own perspective. I think all of our kids are looking forward to getting back to field trips, just in general. It's exciting to be talking about this.
Thank you, guys, for your support, and I couldn't agree with you more, we're all ready to get our kids outside.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, guys, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for your work. I did that on purpose to get you in here and out of here. Okay, we'll go back to nine oh three, Ms. Cook.
Yeah, thank you.
I apologize for that, I I I thought we were, go ahead.
Well, I just took the opportunity to read the whole thing, cuz it's just pleasurable reading. On page twenty-one, uh it references board members um may be funded as the budget allows for uh conferences, conventions and workshops. And it just mentions the National School Board Association, and I'm reminded that our Virginia School Board Association has uh effective. July one severed its relationship with the N S B A, and so I thought we might wanna just alter the language to just say, you know, a national. Association of, cuz I I'm assuming because so many states did that, there'll be another N S B A type. Twenty-one, page twenty-one, so I just thought we could modify the language to not necessarily specifically call out the N S B A. But just say a national association, you know, or national conferences or something, that just, it just.
And what about the N S B A advocacy?
Oh, yeah, it does, sure, yeah, for, so I just thought removing the.
We could say special conferences or special, okay. Do you wanna just direct Sandy and I, or Ms. Young and I to? Was there anything else?
It's perfect.
Perfect. So we will also go back to the red line. Sorry.
I didn't know, I I did not know I was overachieving on this one, I thought.
Yes.
The whole thing.
Okay.
So your ask is that Policy Committee look at this and not be discriminatory on different conferences, just say conferences.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that just so we're not calling out the N S B A, because we're not members as of. Few months from now.
Any concerns about that? Don't think that there would be, okay, all right, anything else, Ms. Cook?
Oh, I just hope that Ms. Aller is taking really good notes.
All right, let's move on to. Personnel actions, ten point zero one, may I have a motion to approve personal actions?
This chair, I recommend that the board approve the personal actions as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, is there a second?
Second.
That was Ms. Young, thank you, Ms. Young, and and Ms. Aller? Yeah, there.
Dr. Beers?
Here. Yeah, I.
Delay for that.
I. Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
I.
Mrs. Hunley.
I.
Mrs. Ortago.
I.
Mrs. Young.
I.
Mr. Dowell.
I, all right, board member comments, we'll start with Dr. Beers if we could.
Um, I don't really have any comments.
Ms. Hunley.
I like the number three, I have three comments, so um I thoroughly enjoyed um doing the door. Um judging at um Stonehouse Elementary School, and I hope they were for Black History Month, but the doors were so relevant. I hope the messages that were on them could stay up for the rest of the year, they were just some great messages, and we just had a a ball. Um second, um I wanna thank Ms. Piles, if you're still up and watching, thank you for the chocolate, um thank you so much. And I'm just wanna let everybody know, I've been checking my phone, cuz um we have twenty-one students that have not made it home yet. That went to state finals today for um track and field, and um. Dr. Worley, my son will be at school tomorrow, and tennis is important, so I know he's gonna say, I got in late, cuz they've been gone since six A M, they spent the night. So they've been gone, but um I can't wait to hear how all the uh students did, but I do know that we had some winners. And um so hopefully they will make it to one of our meetings to show off their medals, thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ortago?
I just have two things, and I will try to make them very quick. I had, I was already going to um point out to um parents in the community uh about the textbook review and input requests. It did go out um on February eighteenth, I think one of our speakers mentioned it, just in case that's not widely known, that um the division is looking for input. Um on curriculum, that that curriculum that's expiring and they're having updated uh versions for science and history. So I think that if anyone, um especially parents who might want to be part of that, um check your family newsletter, volume thirty-nine. And there's a link right to it in a form, uh so I wanted to point that out. And then I also wanted to mention that on this coming Friday, um March fourth, our wonderful uh division orchestra students. Uh teachers and students are having an orchestra assessment. Um it's it's usually a much larger event, I think it's actually been canceled the last two years, but it's usually sponsored by the um. Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association, and a large neighboring division pulled out this year. And so it was going to be canceled, even though our students had been working really hard. Um so um some of the, so Elizabeth Kane and uh some other orchestra teachers. Um a- approached me, but in my context, I am also affiliated with the Virginia Symphony Society, which is a local nonprofit that supports the Virginia Symphony. Orchestra in Norfolk, and so we were able to get three um V S O musicians to come as judges. And so we are going to be able to conduct this assessment just for our kids in um the space we had already had approved and provided. Um so it's it's actually going to be an enhanced experience, we have um, there the three orchestra um people will. Judge and 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 give them scores, but then also give um pointers and feedback. Um and all of the other students, they'll they'll each go up and and get that, but then they'll all get to watch the others. So it's very unique experience and it's very exciting, and so I wanna thank the Virginia Symphony Society, who are also paying for that, so they're they're funding that for our students. So that that's exciting.
Wonderful, Ms. Young?
Okay, yes, I I was just going to address also the public review of textbook adoption, was wanting to see if that could be extended. Cuz it seems like we do have parents that are interested, and I I did have a question about that, I don't know, um maybe somebody could answer, but are the. Are those textbooks publicly on display so that parents can look at them? I mean, I don't know, maybe Mr. Kiefer has the answer.
Yes, I believe they are, and Dr. Worley, I believe they're in central office. And and the hallways of central office all set out for parents to come and see, and that was actually sent out in our family newsletter.
Okay, good, so that information is in the newsletter.
It was last week, I believe, or the week before.
But so if parents are interested in seeing the materials, they can come to the central office and.
Yeah, they've been on display for for some time.
So would they just come to the um receptionist and just ask to have permission to to go in and view them?
I believe that's the process, Ms. Wall, you wanna?
Are are also available electronically, and within the newsletter was a link to the information that parents could access, the credentials to go into each. Uh different textbook that's available for review.
Okay, I might wanna say that louder, it's muffled.
All of the materials are also available electronically, and within the newsletter that was sent out, the credentials to log into each publisher's. Um website to access those materials and review electronically are also available, and that did go out in the newsletter a week and a half ago.
Right, and then there's a a form that they can fill out?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I think that's that's important um for parents to be involved in that. And then I guess I'll just go back to what I was talking about, social distancing, I'm very, very relieved that our uh. Parents and and our staff and faculty can now make decisions about about um personal decisions about where they are with masking. So I'm happy about that, but I do have a question, uh maybe at some future, Mr. Kiefer could give us some. Information about best practices concerning social uh distancing, because I remember when this all started. Uh that there was a lot of discussion about keeping kids in pods, if I if I remember that word correctly. About because then they would be working with the same group of kids all the time, and then the social distancing would not be as necessary. So I would be curious and interested in finding out more information about what is currently being um. Proposed and where we are headed, so thank you, that's all I have to say.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um just two comments today, um and one in response to uh Dr. Heron's uh announcements. Um just to say that um with regard to the um partnership with Thomas Nelson, I just wanted to comment that um I have a child. Who is in the Thomas Nelson uh healthcare, oh, sorry, Virginia Peninsula Community College, sorry, uh old habits. Um healthcare program and in the E M T program, and it's um, it's it's amazing, and I I it's, I've observed. How that program has informed those students' decisions about what they want to do in their careers. And it's, so it's really making connections for them and informing their their decisions on what they're doing next, so it's really amazing to observe that. And um and then also, there was a comment uh by a speaker about sort of um. Uh availability of uh resources for behavioral, to meet behavioral healthcare needs in our community, and just through the work that I do. The Williamsburg Health Foundation, I um see a report every quarter on the behavioral health providers that are available in our community. What insurance they take, whether they're taking new clients or not, um and I I will tell you uh well before the pandemic, but it's gotten worse. There's essentially just a a drastic shortage of behavioral healthcare providers in our community, so. Um she, Doc, I mean, uh Ms. Bourgeois is keenly aware of that from the work that she does and and, um but it's just um. Even if it were pouring money, we wouldn't have the ability to provide the behavioral health services that our students and our community needs. That cuz there's just not providers in our community, um there's a a wealth of providers in in uh Northern Virginia. But in our area, there are not, so we just have a shortage here, so I just wanted to say that.
Ms. Hummel?
I I'm out of comments, so I I appreciate what everyone else said. Uh and then I I do wanna thank Ms. Piles for the chocolate, that was really nice, we hear a lot from her, and I thought her. Her email to all of us was really, really funny about the subtitles, did you guys see that?
Closed captions.
Closed captions? I'm Miss, I'm Miss Humble.
Yeah, I'm Miss Oregon.
You're Miss Oregon and you're Mr. Pierce.
Yeah.
Say what?
Sounds like a beauty contest.
Anyway, that's it, I appreciate all, on a more serious note, I do appreciate all of the work that our senior administration. Has been doing with their slideshow tonight and with all of the uh grant information, that was great too, so. And I'm sorry we kept you so late, sorry.
I'll keep my comments pretty short as well, um but did wanna thank our speakers that took the time to come out and. Just provide some insight on their perspectives on how we're doing, how the division's doing, and how division's serving uh all of our students. Um I wanted to say thank you to our presenters, um Mr. Ross and and others, and of course, our staff as well. Marcel is a, I, Sn- Mr. Snipes um took a a bit of a. Uh well, anyway, thank you for enduring some hard questions. And we do look forward to some answers to some uh some hard questions as well. Uh but in in all seriousness, thank you to all of staff that have hung through with us tonight, I I I wanna thank the board. My colleagues for um staying, you know, it it often does not need to be said, but staying present and engaged through. Um especially the policy and that's. through, um, especially the policy and the S O P conversation and being able to come back to S O P as well. Um, I, I believe it's important work that we do, especially in policy and, and budget, um, the budget piece as well. So thank you all. With that, let's move on to upcoming events. And on March ninth, we've got a twenty-first century and career-ready advisory committee meeting. Doesn't say virtual anywhere, so that's gonna be at Legacy Hall in Newtown at three thirty on the ninth. Um, Special Education Advisory Committee meeting, which will be virtual on March tenth at six thirty, policy committee meeting. They're gonna try to figure out what we did tonight. Uh, virtually eight thirty A M. on the seventeenth of March. Uh, it does not show, uh, we'll get to it, but the twenty-third of March Student Advisory Committee meeting at three at War Hill, uh, School Board Retreat on the twenty-fourth of March, nine thirty A M. in Charlottesville. And what I was looking for was the liaison committee.
The twenty-third at eight A M.
The twenty-third, thank you.
At eight A M. Yeah, that, so that got rescheduled, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-third, thank you. Um, all right, and then we'll move on to upcoming meetings. Uh, maybe it's there. No, okay. Uh, March fifteenth, closed session here in room three hundred. Regular meeting at six thirty at James Blair, and it sounds like by the twelfth of April, that closed session and work session will be at four and four thirty. That's what it sounds like, right? Okay, says six right now, but be looking for a change.
Assuming that we vote on it.
At the next meeting.
The next meeting, right?
Yeah, okay. And.
Do we need to then vote on our meeting schedule again? I don't know if the times are listed. If they are, we do.
We'll take a look at that. Good question, thank you. Okay, it looks like the agenda's set for the next meeting, and with that, we will adjourn this one. Thank you.